All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work session for the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. And if I could ask our clerk, Andrew Cottle, to call the roll.
Okay, President Raymond.
Here.
Vice President Taylor. I know she's on her way. I am here. Trustee Calvert is absent. Trustee Kelly is absent. Trustee Simon Hollands.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Student Representative Noble, I believe, is also absent. Okay, so right now, Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will, I know, be joined later by Trustee Kelly. He had a work commitment to deal with this morning, and then we will hopefully have Trustee Taylor or Vice President Taylor joining us any minute. So we will go ahead now with the pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand. JJ, can you please put the flag up? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Agenda item 1.4 is public comment. I will just remind everyone that due to the current state of emergency declared by the governor, members of the public wishing to make public comment about an item not specifically addressed elsewhere in this agenda may submit their comments via email to publiccomments@washoschools.net. Any public comments received will be forwarded to the Board of Trustees. We will all take a moment to look through that public comment, and at each public comment opportunity throughout the agenda, we will read the names off of any public comments submitted. Public comment can continue to be submitted throughout the meeting. This point, 1.4, is just general public comment, and there will be an opportunity for general public comment again at the end of the meeting. I will now just double-check with our recording secretary, JJ Bachelder, to see if we received any general public comment for today's work session.
We do not have any at this time.
Cute hair.
Thank you.
All right. So then, agenda item 1.5 is action to adopt the agenda. I'd be just looking for a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Trustee Simon Holland, a second by Trustee Cottle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, then we will move forward. Let's see, just... Kristin, do we have an update on Angie? I'm not following these text messages.
I'm going to have Angie Russell give her a call. She's going to be switching to her laptop. It's going through an update right now.
Okay. Well, then we will, I think, just go ahead and move forward with agenda item 2.1. And this is discussion and possible action to allow the Board President to change the start time of regular meetings from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. in June and July of 2020. This is just an item that our Superintendent, Dr. McNeil, and I will provide a little bit more information on and some of that background. And Kristin, if you'd like, I can start.
Sure.
Okay. When Superintendent McNeil and I were kind of going through the upcoming agendas for June and July, you know, she felt, and I agree very strongly, that we have frequent opportunities to discuss reopening plans for the district at these meetings, which is a large agenda item on top of what we saw as already some fairly heavy agendas in June and July, just still kind of playing catch-up on some of the items that we had to push off early in March and/or April, I guess. So it was my suggestion that we consider bumping up the time to 2:00 p.m. We did discuss the fact that at this point in the summer, you know, most of our teachers are not in the classroom. Well, they haven't been in the classroom, but they're not on their Zoom classes. So we are not dealing as much with that issue of our employees not being able to attend due to work constraints. And we really were kind of just looking at a way to avoid having meetings that went into past 9:00 p.m., you know, just for many reasons, our own. My own personal brain power is diminished after 9:00 p.m., for sure. But I think just knowing too for the many staff members that are part of our board meetings and presenting that it's taxing on everyone, whether they're at the office or at home, to be on a Zoom call that late into the evening. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Kristin. That's sort of just my perspective on it.
No, thank you very much, President Raymond. We do have some very large presentations coming to the board, including a Bell's presentation, Security SB 403 presentation. We know that we're going to continue to have legislative updates and budget updates. And this really was a practice that we hoped would avail the board to be having more time to contemplate the very heavy decisions that you all are going to, you know, be faced with over the next couple of months. And it would only be for June and July at this point in time. It allows for more time for contemplation of the big-ticket items that will be coming your way. It very well may be a six- to seven-hour meeting, and so we just wanted to make sure that we had that time available to you all to do that deliberation.
And I would just add that, you know, we can consider too, as we, if this is approved, as you know, the Superintendent and I work on and with our General Counsel on the agendas for these meetings, that, you know, we can certainly look at placing items that are maybe more presentation for the board and might not have as high an interest level with the community members earlier on the agenda so that those, you know, as Superintendent McNeil said, those big-ticket items that do have a lot of public interest, we could place them later in the agenda so that they are heard. You know, we do know that even though we're, you know, still in a place of having virtual meetings, that there are individuals that are going into work and doing things and may not be able to watch remotely until after the, you know, four, five o'clock hour. So there's plenty of items on these agendas that we can front-load them, the agendas with the more the less public interest items. So that was one thought, too. I see that Vice President Taylor has joined us.
Good morning. Sorry, I was trying. I'm on my iPad, so we figured it out.
We saw you trying.
Oh, you did. Okay, good.
Yeah, your name kept popping up. So we are just discussing agenda item 2.1 right now. And I see Trustee Simon Holland has her hand up to comment.
Thank you, President Raymond, and I think your suggestions about, you know, looking for ways to change the order of the agenda is great. I do hope that we will keep it to June and July so that once school starts, our employees will be able to take advantage of participating in the meetings. But I think it's appropriate, and I'll support a motion to approve when it's ready.
And Trustee Minneto.
I think I agree with that. I think that it makes sense for right now, and on YouTube, you can go on later and look at what's there. And I have a hard time believing many people are up at 10:00 watching YouTube in a meeting. I mean, I wouldn't be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we also Superintendent McNeil and I talked a bit about how we do, we sort of lose after 9:00, I think we kind of lose some of that interest in audience as well. So there's sort of a sweet spot, I think, between, you know, 4:00 and 9:00 p.m. We hope to keep the bulk of the meeting in between that time, and hopefully we won't have to go much past 9:00, even at the p.m. start time. All right, if there's no other questions or comments on this item, I, Trustee Simon Holland.
I was just going to, if you want a motion before you hear public comment, if there is any, I would note that the Board provides authority to the Board President to change the start time of regular meetings to 2:00 p.m. in June and July 2020.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Simon Holland, a second by Trustee Minneto. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously, and I, JJ, don't remember seeing any public comment come through on this item.
We do not have public comment on this.
Okay. And I apologize that I'm seeing a little bit of lag on my end. I don't know if it's me or if it's something else, though. If I am spitting out, I may have bad internet rate at the moment. Okay, agenda item 2.2 is discussion and possible action to direct the Superintendent to forward to a future meeting of the Board of Trustees proposed revisions of Board Policy 9080, Employment and Duties of Superintendent Performance, formerly entitled Hiring and Monitoring Superintendent Performance, which revises language related to the hiring of the superintendent. This is for possible action, and Chief General Counsel, Ron Bardo, will be presenting on this item. You're on mute.
You're on mute, Neil. No mute.
Well, isn't that embarrassing? Let me try that again. Good morning, everyone. How's it going? President Raymond, Superintendent McNeil. So as you may recall, I believe it was February, we were asked to look at the 9,000 series as it relates to the Superintendent. We looked at nine, we looked at four policies. This is the first of those four. So what we did is we tried not to change anything, so, but we tried to make it more streamlined. So that's our, these are our suggestions, and we're open to hear anything that you might want to change or add, or the big significant changes, 9080 and 9 08, I believe, eight, no, 81 had some overlap. So we tried to pull out that overlap for monitoring the Superintendent, and then make 9080 just really simply about, these are the duties of the Superintendent, and this is the Superintendent's employment and how it works in the Washoe County School District. So any recommendations you have, anything you want to change, if you have to do that, I know we're going to talk about the evaluation process at the end of this meeting. So if we want, we can combine these items. It's really up to the Board at this point.
Okay, that was actually, just struck me, if I should look at opening 2.2 through I guess maybe 2.4. I know we were keeping that valuation one sort of to discuss as part of a different conversation. Should we go?
Yeah, I think that 9080, 2.01, and two, sorry for the delay, I'm trying to jump between multiple tabs, so, but 9080 and 9081 are the two that had significant overlap with each other. 2.03 and 2.04, those seem rather simple to me. They're only really, those are just, again, minor changes in those two middle policies. 9080, we're just taking out all the monitoring, which would be evaluations, and just saying, here's what we do. We hire a Superintendent. Here's what we expect the Superintendent to do. We copy a lot of language out of the NRS and then add a little bit of our own, such as a contract, et cetera. So it's really, it's up to you how you want to handle it.
Okay, let's just go through them, policy by policy, and then if we find that, you know, we're not, I think they're, they do start to stand alone, so. Okay, so we'll stick right now with just 2.2, which is 9080. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Neil and the team, for working on this, and thank you, Trustee Cottle, for, you know, making the request that we, that we take a look at these. I did have one point in 9080, 2.02, that I wanted to discuss and just raise. In 2B, it says, "The Superintendent may be dismissed for cause," period. And it occurred to me that it might be worthwhile to add to that, "may be dismissed for cause and/or as specified in the approved employment agreement." I know that the next, the next phrase talks about the employment agreement, but I think it, it gives us coverage for clearly articulating that there are other ways in which a Superintendent may be dismissed, and those would be outlined in the specified, in the approved employment agreement. So Neil, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that suggestion.
So adding to the end of 2D, am I, I'm muted, yeah.
2B. I think it's B. I don't have the.
I think it's actually 2D.
Oh, I think it's D.
Sorry, I must have misprinted it in mine. Okay.
Yeah, D says, "A Superintendent may be dismissed at any time for cause," and then you'd like to add.
As specified in the approved employment agreement.
Yeah.
I think it just makes it clearer and it protects us.
Sure. And, and I don't mean this to sound defensive. We basically clipped that right out of the statute when we put that in there. And, but I, I like the addition of that. It makes it clear that we're under a contract, and for the members of the public who want to look at this, they know that there's not just this policy, there's a contract out there as well. So I think it gives good notice to the public.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. That was all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anyone else have any feedback on this policy 9080 at this time?
And President Raymond, would you like me to explain the process for what we're going to do at the board meeting, or at least the suggested one has a heads up?
Yeah, thank you. That'd be great.
Okay. And so trustees, one of the things that President Raymond, President Raymond and I and the Superintendent have been talking about is given COVID-19 and the desire of the governor to reduce public bodies, which makes sense, we're going to ask that the Board suspend the Board policy that requires that this go to Board Policy Committee. So there will be a vote at the board meeting for just these four policies on the June, I forget the date, but June 8th, I think it is, no, 9th, I guess, meeting where you'll suspend that policy just for these four items, so we can get them done and get them through the process. Then each policy will be considered individually to start the 13-day review process. As you know, the Board does two readings, so reading one will happen once that policy is suspended. If the Board chooses not to suspend the policy, then we would have to reload it all the way to July, do a Board policy meeting, have more public meetings. And I think public meetings are great, but under the current circumstances, this seemed to make the most sense to us. So that's the policy that we'll be doing or suggesting to do going forward at the next meeting.
And I'll just double-check. I didn't remember seeing anything come through, JJ, but did we get any public comment on this item?
Not.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no further questions or comments on this one, then I would be just happy to entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees provides direction to forward the proposed revision to Board Policy 9080, Employment and Duties of Superintendent Performance, formerly entitled Hiring and Monitoring Superintendent Performance, to a future regular meeting of the Board of Trustees with the suggested change to 2D as specified by Trustee Simon Holland, and this is for consideration of preliminary approval.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Simon Holland, a second by Trustee Cottle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to 2.3, discussion and possible action to direct the Superintendent to forward to a future meeting of the Board of Trustees the proposed revisions of Board Policy 9085, Delegation to the Superintendent, which revises language related to the duties delegated to the superintendent. I will pass off to Chief General Counsel. Do you have any specifics on this one?
Yeah, thank you again, and good morning again. This, again, is just a cleanup from the past. What we're trying to do is make the language more concise pursuant to our previous discussions when then interim Superintendent McNeil asked our office to really look into the managing and wording of these policies. We tried to really tighten them down. We adopted Board Policy 9070 or 9100 for this, that purpose, and we just redrafted this one to be consistent with how we drafted the others. Most of this policy does come from the Board's work with Dr. Alsbury. So our changes, I think, are minor. I don't really have anything glaring to point out unless the Board wants to make any changes or talk about, talk about anything. That's really all we were doing, just kind of cleaning it up.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I had two thoughts on this one. Under purpose, I thought that believes in the concept of balanced governance was maybe softer than the Board's stated commitment, and maybe we could use terms instead of believes in the concept, say, you know, endorses the concept or adopts the concept. I prefer to say adopts the concept, just so it's really clear that it's not just a belief, but it's our guiding philosophy and principle. And then if you indulge me, I think it's under 2G. I, I was looking for a way to add things that relate, after balanced governance model standards policies, I was suggesting we add adopted administrative regulations and all applicable laws, regulations, agreements, and I threw in case precedent. I don't know, you know, how to say that it's not just those things, but we'll be, you know, we also will expect the compliance with all those things. I know it goes without saying, but I think it's important to have it here so that everything relating to that subject is here. So I throw that out for discussion and comment. Mr. Rombardo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Am I looking at the wrong one? Because the G says, "The Board may change its district values, mission, vision, strategic goals, and balanced governance model standards policies at any time it chooses." So it can't change case law, or I guess it could change regs.
I need to get another computer fired up so I can see the.
Is it, maybe it's the one above. Let me look. As long as.
JJ, could you put, oh, it's F, okay.
It's F, yeah. I was like, yeah, we can't change that stuff.
Looking at, I must be looking at another thing, but JJ, is it possible to put up the policies as we're talking about them so that we have that language in front of us?
That would make it a little easier, actually, wouldn't it?
But yeah, if it's, if it's F, apparently I was looking at different versions or something, because I have, the other one was wrong, too.
JJ, if it's helpful. Oh, you got it.
So let's go down. Let's see.
Oh, boy, that's so tiny.
Yeah, it's F that I was talking about.
Okay.
So adding after balanced governance model standards policies, I would add adopted administrative regulations and all applicable laws, regulations, agreements, and case precedent. I'm just trying to get at those things that are like employment practices, you know, labor agreements, those kinds of things that, that the Superintendent also needs to use a reasonable interpretation of.
Okay, I can, I can come up with suggestive language for the next, for our next meeting.
That, that works okay for you, Kristin, and you, Neil.
Yes, and I think that's a good addition for that. I mean, it allows the Superintendent to make sure that they're checking against all of those particular, you know, documents and laws, and so, yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Yes.
Thank you. I have to mute myself again because my dog's about to start barking.
Okay.
Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. Neil, I just had two quick ones. On number one, I was looking at Title 34 last night, really couldn't find specifically what this is talking about. So what authority is number one talking about under NRS Title 34?
So NRS Title 34 is the, that language, I believe, comes right out of the statute, too. I have to be honest, we did these quite a while ago, so let me pull them up. But Title 34, so how, the NRS is broken up not just by chapters, but by titles as well. So the title is, Title 34 is, I believe, public education. Let me double-check.
Yeah, it was public education. I just wasn't sure specifically, like, what authority Title 34 gives the Board and what authority then.
Oh, well, it's widespread. It's the ability to sell property, the ability to, it's very widespread. So you have zoning decisions, you have, it's all the things you do on a day-to-day basis, employment of the Superintendent. You have the employment contracts, technically, under some statutes and in smaller jurisdictions, Boards will actually make hiring decisions of, at every level. We haven't done that for some time here in the Washoe County School District, and we delegated that authority to the Superintendent. But those are all the things that are entitled 34, those type of things, spending, you're managing your budget, spending your budget. What we're going to spend the budget on, all of those type of decisions are in there. I'm sure I'm missing some. That's a pretty big. But do you, does that make sense? Does that answer your question?
So Title 34 is based to the day-to-day running of the school district?
Basically.
Okay. And then the second one I had was under 2I. If, I would recommend we potentially add language referencing the policy that allows the Board an opportunity to place a hiring of an executive member on the agenda for discussion, that most recent policy that we passed earlier this year.
So, okay. I don't remember the number offhand, but you want to add?
Yeah, I forgot the number two, because while the employment decision is the superintendent's, that policy allows the board, when appropriate, to hear the justification of it or possibly block the hire.
I believe that was the talent acquisition one. I think it's in the 4,000 series, Neil.
I think, yeah, I was, it is in the 4,000s. I just can't remember which one, but I can definitely put that reference in there.
3510.
What is it, Emily?
I think it's 4510. I'm looking right.
I think that's a good one. So what we could do is, the board, something along the lines of, and if you guys give me some time, I can bring it, when I bring it back, I'll make it sound better. But something along the lines of the board delegates to the superintendent or her his designee with the limitation of Board Policy 4510, comma, the authority to make an all employment decisions except those regarding the superintendent, something like that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. Just wanted to reference so it's clear for anyone reading the policy.
We can do that. Thank you very much.
Trustee Simon Holland?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to take my hand down.
Oh, no problem.
Fine. And you got, you got the first suggestion I made about endorses or adopts versus believes in.
So really, then we're looking at three different updates to this policy based on today's conversation. Neil, you got all three of those. I got lost on the numbers. Two.
I do. I have one. I have one in the purpose statement that adopts instead of whatever it was, endorses. I can't see it because we're not in the right spot. And then paragraph F, we're going to make reference to regs, laws, case precedent, contracts. In F, and then in H, we're going to make reference to the talent acquisition Board Policy, and we believe it's 4510, but whatever the talent acquisition policy is.
Great.
Hi, Kristin. Madam, or sorry, President, I think that last one was about I.
Yeah, I, that's what I thought.
Not H.
Did I say H? I'm sorry. I, my, I looked at I and I wrote down H, so sorry.
So on, while we're on I, I am wondering, and this may just be nitpicky, for lack of a better term, but it could have absolute consequences if we don't put. So the board delegates to the superintendent and/or her or his designee the authority. I'm just thinking, you know, as far as our principles, it's not necessarily just my designee. I don't want to, like, lockstep my designee. I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I think all of us are your designee. That's the system we've set up. So somebody who is hired as a principal and you've decided within your authority to give principals hiring decision of teachers, for example, then that's your designee. You don't necessarily need to anoint them, if you will, directly, but you have, you know, you've said to area superintendents, area superintendents, we want you to go out and hire principals. So they're your direct designee. When the area superintendent hires a principal, then, and that comes with certain authorities, you've given them that authority. So they're still your designee. I don't think we're, I see your point, but I don't think we're pigeonholed into that.
Thank you.
And Emily just shot me a text. It's 4110, just on that I.
Aye.
All right. JJ, did we get any public comment on this item?
We did not.
Thank you. Well, I would be happy to entertain a motion. Try to be helpful here.
I'll go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Board of Trustees, Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees provides direction to forward the proposed revisions of Board Policy 9085, Delegation to the Superintendent, to a future regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for consideration of preliminary approval, reflecting the three revisions proposed by the board during this discussion to the purpose, to Section 2F and 2I. Second.
Right. Motion by Trustee Simon Holland and a second by Vice President Taylor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. We are now on item 2.04, Discussion and Possible Action to Direct the Superintendent to Forward to a Future Meeting of the Board of Trustees, the Proposed Revisions of Board Policy 9088, Trustee Superintendent Relations, which revises language related to the relationship between the board, individual members of the board, and the superintendent of schools. This is for possible action, and I will turn it back over to Chief General Counsel, Rombardo.
Good morning again, and thank you. And really, the story stays the same. We just wanted to streamline this, add a couple of things that we saw that might become issues and things we've run into since the adoption of Board Policy 9088. So we changed the purpose statement a little bit. As you can see, one of the things we did notice is that we have had issues with members, individual members, so public bodies directing or attempting to direct the superintendent and/or his staffs. We just wanted to further reiterate that. We did do that in our public body policy as well. We always want to make sure that public bodies vote on everything. And so we did add that little bit of language in there on paragraph A and B. And JJ, oh, but thank you, JJ, for putting this up too. That makes it a lot easier. And if you could go down to page two. Oh, great. And, you know, basically, we just made references to the board policies instead of those title names, for lack of a better term. And really, that's it. It's just cleanup and keeping it tight. And if the board wants to make other changes, we'd be happy to make those work for you.
Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. In reviewing this policy, I spent a lot of time looking at three. I didn't realize how much is available to trustees to hold meetings. I think this is a good opportunity for school district staff to essentially state the case on why this might be a little bit overwhelming potentially for very few staff members and the board services. I am not aware of anyone on the board currently that has gone to the extent of using all of that this policy is, makes available. I think it's great. However, I'm also realistic in reading some of this about how I don't know where the time would be for some staff. So while I think this is really good to have trustee support, this is so specific on what is going to be expected if a trustee decides to do this often. So this might be the opportunity to maybe make this a little more realistic. That's, I guess, what, first thing I thought when I read this, is that this is a lot of responsibility. So I don't know, Kristin, if you want to address some of that on behalf of staff.
I appreciate that, Trustee Cottle. I think the overall intent here is just to kind of lay out in order to make sure that we have the public noticed appropriately, that you all have the support that you need when you want to have a particular, you know, the monthly or the family constituent meetings. We really haven't had those in a while. I know that you all have had your, I don't know what you would call, like, your own trustee-type meetings. So are you asking, you know, for example, with B, monthly family and constituent meetings, have the secretary called to secure a host in the school, are you concerned with the amount of things that have to happen in order to put that into place?
Yeah, I, back in the day, we did talk with your trustee almost town halls, and we should probably think about starting those again. But I remember it was one specific district every month. The way this reads is every trustee could try to hold stuff pretty often. And if all seven of us tried to hold essentially constituent meetings at least once a month, and we did a newsletter, and we wanted our constituents contacted, if all seven of us decided one day we're going to utilize this policy to its fullest extent, I don't know if it's possible for staff to handle that. And I think if we just let this go forward, and I think this is the time to realize what maybe our limitations are and what's realistic. Talk with your trustees were great, but it was one a month for the everyone. And if I wanted to do one, I had to wait till, like, my turn came up where Katie and I would go to North Valleys, but that would be maybe once a school year. So this could potentially be a ton of meetings with a ton of responsibility. And I'm not exactly sure who would this fall on in our office. Could be Jen. I'm not really sure, but that would be a lot of stuff to handle.
I agree.
Neil, it does seem to be really specific. Is there a way to just make it more general in scope as a list of kind of possibilities? Or I don't even know if that's necessary, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, and, you know, we discussed this one in our office, and we decided not to make changes, although we're always uncomfortable with these type of specific, these type of lists, especially when it says can include but is not limited to, which basically this does. The list is not all-inclusive. I, it seems to me that this should be a decision that's made between the operations of the superintendent's office and board services support and the board of trustees and each individual trustee member. So not, this might be better off written as a reg, and you could just say something along the lines of the trustee shall receive support from the superintendent's office in order to achieve some of the following. And then talk about what these type of meetings are without specificity, but just community outreach and family outreach, student outreach, and those type of general terms. And then you put some meat on the bone, if you will, in the regulation process. And/or just say, here's what we're asking you to do, Dr. McNeil, through Jennifer and JJ. That might be a cleaner way of doing it. So just a paragraph in three and delete off the list. But in that paragraph, you include these concepts. We could definitely make that work if that interests the board.
Well, and I'll just add real quickly, I think the other part that I like about that, Neil, is this also takes into consideration the communications office because they do the community events, board services does, for example, the school visits. So I think there's a couple offices kind of woven in here as far as the workload here.
And we can make that more clear, or actually what we could do to be consistent in our governance is the board's telling the superintendent it's policy, this is what we want. And the superintendent then, in her reg, can adopt, I'm going to have communications handle this part, and I'm going to have board services handle this part. That would be a real clean way of doing it, in my opinion.
Trustee Simon Holland?
Thanks, Madam President, and I appreciate Trustee Cottle raising this. I was going to suggest a similar approach and to delineate only those topics, not the steps involved, but just to say, you know, examples of the kind of support provided. And I would take out references to monthly, but, you know, things like family and constituent meetings, town hall meetings, newsletters, constituent contacts, elected official contacts, so that there is some guidance of, these are the, these are examples of the things that would be done. And as you all have said, take out the exhaustive list of things, but give some guardrails as to these are the kinds of things that are examples of what trustees can ask for.
Trustee Minetto and then Vice President Taylor.
Yes, that's about what I was going to say. Well, thank you, Madam President, that would make more sense. And I'm not opposed to saying a time limit of some sort, meaning unless there's extreme circumstances, you know, this is how often, or, you know, monthly, or semester, or quarter, or whatever, just to put less work on our, on our staff. Thank you.
Vice President Taylor. Oh, sorry, Chief General Counsel.
Just quickly, one thing that came to mind is, I was taking notes on this, and Trustee Minetto brought it up, is I do think to some extent this is where the president and maybe Trustee Taylor and Trustee Simon Holland can speak better to this, but the president has to help out a little bit here because we don't want to put the superintendent in the position of having to say no. So a president should probably step in and say, you're asking for too much, and it's taking up too much staff time to other trustees. That's why we have a board president. Just food for thought instead of, again, bringing in too many specifics, but also a way to solve that problem. That kind of came to me, and I wanted to share that thought.
Vice President Taylor. Vice President Taylor?
I'm sorry. I think I have a little bit of a lag here.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I'm going to upgrade her Wi-Fi. As I think I'm going to be here. Anyway, yeah, I guess I'm going to concur. I do think it's really important. I think we certainly have to honor, you know, the limitations we have staff-wise. And I know Superintendent McNeil, you know, made some adjustments that she thought were necessary for her to run the shop as she needs to, which is certainly what you want her to do as a superintendent. You know, but we still, you know, of course, need to be mindful of the workload of those folks and just balance that. And I think we've done a good, a pretty good job of balancing that and knowing that we can't overwhelm them. And if we do, that's when the president, you know, steps in and shares. I don't think that we want to say there are things that the trustee cannot ask for a constituent meeting, or you cannot ask for a town hall, or you cannot ask for, I don't think we're going to get into that kind of detail because, you know, circumstances change, situations change, and so on. But I do think, just like in any other, one, I think this can be cleaned up and not so detailed. I would agree with that. But I also think we don't want to, we don't want to get to where we're saying, well, we're making it hard to contact your constituents or work with your constituents at all. And like anything else, if a trustee gets out of hand, then that's when the president steps in and says, hey, we have to balance this a little better. You know, what are you trying to achieve? And there may be some better ways that we can get there, like in any other case. But I don't, I want to, I want to make sure that we actually encourage trustees as they feel necessary, you know, to do these types of things. So I hear, I hear Trustee Cottle in that there should be, we don't want everyone to do everything on a monthly basis, and that's true. And although we haven't had the problem in the past, boards change and so on, but that's when the guard, that's when the guardrails come in.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't see whose hand went up first. Trustee Cottle, or?
Phil went first.
Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. I think when we're looking this over, it almost looks very similar to what they do in Clark. I think in Clark, each trustee almost has their own little team based on individual constituent meetings they have. We're just not set up this way. And also, when we get really specific, there's a couple of items under B that I would think collide with other board policies, such as working with communications to send out news releases. I'm sure we don't want trustees all individually sending out press releases through communications and working with technology for electronic messages. So we're sending out, so trustees can just send out connect ads without the President or the superintendent being aware. So in language, I think it's important that potentially other policies are referenced, so it's clear on why a trustee probably can't just contact communications and say, hey, I want to send out a press release. But this also looks like it was probably drafted a long time ago, and things have changed. And we have more technology now, whereas, you know, like Dr. Taylor hosted a town hall online versus in person, so there's more opportunities for that. So in any, so the broader, the better for language. And then superintendent can get more specific. But this really boxes us in to potentially violating other board policies that we currently have on the books.
The Chief General Counsel.
So I do want to point out to the board, and I'm sure you already know this, but I feel like I need to anyway, is that this goes on for about seven, or four more pages, five more pages, this list of updated. In my mind, they're just day-to-day activities, some of it, too. It's like open the mail, and so I don't, I just want to point that out so that we make sure, for the record, for the board. And I think the way the board's headed is great, and we could definitely come up with some language, again, to get you to where you want to be, and make this a little tighter.
I mean, I'm just going to throw the idea out there. I'm wondering, is the actual title of the policy accurate to what is in the board policy? I mean, this really isn't about the superintendent's relationship with the, with the board. It's more around public engagement and the day-to-day operational activities of the trustees. I don't know if it has so much to do with the relations between the trustees and the superintendent.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thanks, Madam President. I, I think it, it may be more appropriate, based on Dr. McNeil's comment, to say board support, that sort of nomenclature. But what I wanted to mention and just raise, I don't know whether it would belong here. It's certainly, we're talking about support to board members, to individual trustees. And I have worked in a situation where an elected official asked staff to do personal business for them. And I would be, I think it might be an appropriate place to have it here, just stated that, you know, trustees shall not request any staff member to, you know, perform any personal duties. And then, let's see, what was the other thing? Oh, and then, some of this also can slop over into campaign activity. And I would just, I would just ask for counsel's suggestions on, because, again, I've had it happen. And if it's not spelled out in the place where we would go for that kind of information, it can be a real problem. And it's not fun to be the superintendent or the CEO having to wag your finger at the elected official who's doing it. I know we're going to be talking about ethics policies elsewhere, but it might belong here.
Yeah, so let me address maybe three things, if I may. First, the title, we could go with superintendent's support of trustees. Might be a nice little fit, because that's really what we're doing, is how is staff, which for you, as the superintendent, going to be used to support the trustees. With regard to personal business requests, I asterisked that. I do think it should be its own paragraph after three. If we were to do three and say, here are the type of things we are going to do for you, but then maybe here are the things we're not going to do for you. And I also put an asterisk next to campaign. I think it's, it kind of hurts to restate that, and it does add some clarity to, we have very good, I feel, we have good policies. We just dealt with it on 1310, about political activity that the board has to follow, and everyone has to follow. But you can never say that enough. It's also part of 281A, which is, NRS 281A, which is the ethics laws, and talks about how you can't campaign and use public, public monies and public staff to campaign and run your own campaign. But it's always a good idea. So I, I think if we do that consolidated paragraph, that would be a nice, here's what we're not going to do for you type, those type of things. We could do that, if that's what the board wants.
Vice President Taylor.
All right, I feel good, I'm going to mute it. I was just going to add, I was just going to add, and this may not need to go here, but I'd love to hear my colleagues kind of chime in on this. Trustee Cottle mentioned earlier that I did the virtual town hall, which was great, and I really appreciated staff support around that. And I spoke with you, Madam President, about it. And then you made the recommendation, which was a good one, that I just shared with the other trustees. Just let them know, hey, FYI, this is going on. Appreciate that. Do we want, should that be something in here that we should share it with each other? You know, for an example, if, if Trustee Minetto is going to do a town hall somewhere, or have a, whatever she's going to do, and I'm out in the community, and someone says, oh, hey, Trustee Minetto is doing, yes, oh, you know, I mean, it just makes us a little bit more cohesive in that. Not, it's just, you know, it could be something that we informally agree to, but I do think that it's, you know, it's informative. And just, and sometimes we, maybe we may get ideas from each other, because I stole that one from Andrew, frankly. And that led, he and I were going to do something together later. But also, we can support each other in it as well. So I'd love to hear feedback from that, from my colleagues.
Trustee Minetto, I see your hands up.
I think that makes sense. Almost we could, no, I don't know how you let everybody know, because there have been lots of times where, oh, somebody's doing that, no. And Neil, I really like your idea about just another blurb saying, this is what you don't get to do, which makes sense. But to reiterate, and reiterate, and reiterate is what we somehow humans need. Thank you.
Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Dr. Taylor. I think there are times where I have to remind myself to potentially, Katie, no, I'm doing something in North Valleys, because our at-large representatives do overlap the other five of us in different areas. And so every constituent is represented by two trustees. So I think it's important, the at-large reps are especially involved, just because, one, either Katie or Jackie do overlap all of us. The other comment I want to make about the campaigning, or use of campaign, I guess, activities, I think it's, I don't, this is maybe a better question for a chief counsel, on how specific we want to get. Because there's, there could be an opportunity where a trustee holds a town hall to speak about school things, very appropriate. But one slide in the presentation, let's say, is talking about campaign platforms. It may not say campaign platforms, but it's clearly campaign platforms in an election year. Business cards are made available that are for elections. And so you could have a very legitimate town hall using staff time and public dollars. But within that, little political pushes are made available. And I, I see that as a great area, because as trustees, we do hold those things within our responsibilities. But where, but making sure that line is clear, if in an election year, you cannot even hint at it, you can't provide materials, you can't talk about your campaign, I just don't know how specific you get, as you mentioned, Neil, if it's, if it's maybe not spelled out enough, if there's gray area, and you can essentially sneak something in you're potentially not allowed to do. So I don't know if you want to address how specific this has to get when board members are using public services to serve their constituents.
Yeah, I think what we would do on the political activity is refer to the previous policy I mentioned, 1310, which lays it out pretty nicely. And, and when you, when you, I don't, I don't want to go into specifics, because I don't want to, I don't know exactly what's happened. But we always have to be careful when we do hold these events, and we have to be careful turning them into campaign rallies. That's what we don't want to do, right? So, so I think, I think we would just reference back to that and say, pursuant to this policy, we are not going to support you with this type of, these type of, in these type of political activities. And then your, you had two questions there, and I spaced the first one. I answered the second one. What was your first question?
I wasn't a question, it was just more of a comment on making sure we're involved with each other, especially our at-large representatives, due to the nature of how our districts broken up.
And I'll point out on that one, board policy 90, I believe it's 9051, I was just trying to read through it. Talks about how the board is responsible for communicating with each other and letting each other know. So I'm not sure we need to put it in this one, because if we're making this how the superintendent is going to support trustees, that's trustees supporting each other. So slightly different concept. And I believe 9051 covers that. I was trying to read it, it's very lengthy, I couldn't find it, but I believe it's in there. It talks about that.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, I think there have been some real good suggestions and a lot of ideas on how to clean this up a little bit. I would just throw my support in for wherever appropriate, but just in, I do think that there is a place in this policy for the board chair to be referenced if there is need for additional kind of, you know, handling of situations. I don't know how to say it. So I think that, I, I do think that is, you know, this, to me, seems like the place for the mention of that, but it's not solely on the superintendent to handle that type of an interaction as the board chair. You know, there, there will be times, and if it feels right to you, Neil, to put that in here, I think that makes sense to me.
I'd be, I think what we could do is, in that exception part, where we're not going to provide campaign and personal activities, and again, I need time to craft the language, but something along the lines of, if it becomes a problem, the board president shall work with the superintendent to discuss the issue with the trustee, kind of like Trustee Taylor pointed out. When, when we talk about the exceptions, does the board want to consider this? Just came to me, does the board want to consider adding, and I think this was Trustee Cottle's point, if one trustee makes too much requests or it becomes too burdensome on staff time, something along those lines. So maybe we talk about staff resources, and that that might be one of the exceptions, when staff resources are pulled too thin, we just can't do it. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there as an idea, since we're, this is a different route than originally thought of.
Yeah. I personally like that idea. I think the past two months have been sort of an example of where, you know, that type of language would be useful if, if we're in a situation where staff is already strained due to circumstances that, you know. And again, I think that is an area where the board chair would be, you know, in the position of reaching out to that trustee. That's just me personally. Trustee Simon Holland, I see Vice President Taylor and Superintendent McNeil. I'll start with you, Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I think in, in 2B1, which is on the screen right now, I think, I think that, that issue is covered, because the superintendent has to approve the employee action. And it, it can become really sensitive. And there are times when one, you know, something's happening in one trustee's district, maybe there's a school that's had a particular incident, and that trustee really needs to ask for a lot of support from the staff. I think, I think our firewall around it is that 2B1, where the superintendent approves the use of, of staff support. I, I, it can create a lot of tension between board members as well if, if we try to say, you know, so here's the amount of time that's reasonable. And, and it's hard to put that into policy and have everybody understand it the same way. So I would, I would, I would leave it with how it's phrased in 2B1, with the caveat that the President will, you know, if there is a perception that something unreasonable has been requested, that the President will assist the superintendent. That, that's my two cents worth, again, having, having been in that situation before.
Good, good point. All right, Vice President Taylor.
I was going to say what, very similar to what Trustee Simon Holland said, so.
Okay, Superintendent McNeil.
I was just looking at the same, with the 2B, that's where I was going to go to, is I think we have that verbiage in there. And then just to be able to add, you know, with, with coordination with the, with the chair, the superintendent shall work out particular issues or something to that effect.
Great. Right, if there's no further discussion on this item, then I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I move that the Board of Trustees approves board policy 9088 with the, with the changes and edits. No, is this, is this substantive, Neil? Do you think this should come back to us?
Well, yeah, no, we're coming back, we're bringing this back to the board. This, all this is right now is the work session, we're just trying to get what you want.
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to move that the Board of Trustees approves policy 9088 and asks the, the staff to work in the changes and recommendations as discussed, and it will be forwarded on to a full meeting of the Board of Trustees.
A second.
Okay, a motion by Vice President Taylor, second by Trustee Cottle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. It's always the ones we think that are going to be quick and easy, that we spend time. That was really good conversation. Okay, 2.5, discussion, action to direct the superintendent to forward to a future meeting of the Board of Trustees, proposed revisions of board policy 9081, progress monitoring superintendent's performance, and the board balanced governance model, goals, and standard, formally entitled formative monitoring of the superintendent and strategic language related to the progress monitoring of the superintendent's performance. This is for possible action. I will just mention that we had a lot of conversation about where to place this item on the agenda today, knowing that we're going to have conversation about the actual plans for the evaluation. And, you know, the conversation with Chief General Counsel and Superintendent McNeil, we, we did feel like we could put it here at this point to discuss, knowing that the goal is to kind of make this policy more vague and not as. um, knowing that the goal is to kind of make this policy more vague and not as tied to the evaluation. So we'd like to try to have that conversation now about the proposed revisions. But if trustees feel that we need to have the, uh, move to have conversation around and discussion around two point six, the evaluation, please, you know, make that, uh, clear to us, that's whatever point in our conversation uh, so that we can have that discussion as well. But I think the goal and, and Chief General Counsel can speak to that better than I, is to not tie this policy to a specific uh, evaluation tool. So I will pass it over to you, Neil.
Great, thank you again, President Raymond, Superintendent McNeil, trustees. I'm almost done. So this is a board policy nine zero eight one. The significant change for our office when we took on this project was, again, trying to clean these things up, what we was, this significant overlap with nine zero eight zero, we wanted to get the, excuse me, evaluation process into one spot, which we did, we moved everything over to nine zero eight one. Uh, we think that's better for the trustees, for the superintendent and for the public so they don't have to bounce around between policies. And then after doing that, what we realized is that uh, we have this policy, it was adopted through board governance and through Dr. Osberry's work that the board did, I believe it was two fifteen. However, we've also been using another tool in evaluating the superintendent. So what we need to make sure we do here today is make sure that this policy is forward, uh, with the, the superintendent. We did this from our perspective, uh, we are not HR folks, so please keep that in mind. We looked at it and tried to clean it up. That being said, we would be happy to do whatever the board wants to do. And of course, and uh, one thing that has come to mind to me is maybe, and I have to, I just thought of this this morning, I was out running, I was like, do we really even need all of this in this board policy? So I'm just throwing this out there as kind of an off the wall, if you don't want to go with this route, is something along the lines of a real simple board policy that says the board could pursue it to the contract, consistent with the contract, the board, kind of like we did in all the nine zero eight zero, the board shall value, shall adopt an evaluation tool for the superintendent on a yearly basis. And then it's an action of the board and you decide how you want to do it going forward. Or I read some, uh, policies out of Texas and so I kind of went back this morning and looked at those and maybe that just says, we shall evaluate the superintendent consistent with these values and you pick two, three or four values. Uh, in Texas, they use, it uses many and I was reading this, uh, in some paperwork that Emily gave, gave us. Some states use twelve, ten, whatever you choose. And here we put the metrics into those values. But this way, this policy is not this big thing that stay down to, here's how we're doing it, right? That, that's kind of where I'm coming from, if that makes sense to the board, I hope, I hope it makes sense. So, uh, this one is, this is where it's at right now, but I'll just turn it over to the board and we'll do what you want us to do.
Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just, I want to clarify, so, so is was the intent to um, make this about monitoring the, you know, what the district is doing, uh, on a global basis in terms of the strategic goals, et cetera? Or is this, is the purpose of this policy to introduce the evaluation discussion? Um, because I have different comments depending on what people think the purpose should be. I mean, do we have a, do we have a board policy that says there shall be a strategic plan adopted for every year? I don't know if we even have that. And if, if we do, and if the purpose of the, of this policy is to monitor progress on the strategic plan, then, then we could say that. But if this is supposed to be about, you know, the superintendent's performance, we do need to add a lot of things, in my opinion. Um, and I think, Neil, you know, you're right, it is once, one idea is to say, yeah, the board will approve it. I, that worried me. All of the other stuff that's in there about balanced governance and with the excuses that we had with things that are, that go to that, the subjective, you know, proficient and all of that. I just worry about that and having read, you know, some of the material where superintendents are saying, you know, I want to, I want to know the objective measures that I'm accountable for and not, you know, gee, I'm developing versus proficient, which is so subjective. So I guess I just ask, what, what do you all feel you need this policy to? What do you feel the policy purpose should be? What do you need it to be?
Well,
Kristin, I would ask you.
Yeah, as I say, I, we don't have a stake in that one, but yeah, the, the superintendent McNeil probably the best.
No, and I appreciate, I appreciate that very much. And I do, I do think that this needs to be a little bit streamlined, to use Chief Counsel's term. And I agree with that trustee Simon Holland, as far as a, an absolute objective process. You know, I mean, I, I think of like the values or the pillars that, that you would be monitoring a superintendent as far as management of financial affairs, maintaining quality of educational programs, relationship with employees, developing and implementing long-term plans going forward, you know, all of those types of things. Because I think, I think it is confusing here, are, are we monitoring the performance of the superintendent? Or are we monitoring the performance of the district against the strategic plan and those metrics involved in there? And maybe they needed to be separated.
If I, if I may jump in here, the one, when we put this on the agenda and we decided to pull it was after discussion. That is some of the confusion and I think we need to get some guidance from the board on what, what you want this to look like. And, and um, I just texted Emily, I, I think Emily might have some good input here too. She provided, she provided me, she provided Dr. McNeil with what they do nationwide, which although long reads were pretty interesting, uh, concepts. And so I think from legal's perspective, the one part where we would be most concerned is I would hate to have an evaluation tool that is different than what appears to be an evaluation policy. Even if that's not the intent of this policy, we don't want the appearance of two different looking items. So that I would just suggest that we either make this clear what this is and it's something totally different and here's how we evaluate, or we make them consistent with each other.
I think it would be helpful for me right now to, to understand and to hear from the other trustees about kind of what they do see this policy doing. Before we get too deep into, um, you know, what other districts and, and what's going on nationally. I think, um, for me, this policy was specific to the evaluation of the superintendent, but but I do see that tied to our strategic plan and the performance of the district. And so I don't know how you exactly, uh, separate those two. I think I have similar concerns to trustee Simon Holland about, you know, just keeping it so general that it just refers to an annual evaluation. But on the other hand, uh, you know, that's you know, we can't, as this current board, we can't control what every future board is going to do. And it, and it will change whether, you know, no matter what we put in this policy, future boards could, could and will come in and they'll change things. And so, you know, I think, um, to me, that my feeling going into this conversation was that this policy needs to, there's too many opportunities for this policy to confuse the process because it, it, it can't live so tied to a specific evaluation tool without it needing to be super, super specific. And so, uh, I felt going into this and from my perspective, that the, the right, you know, way to go with this policy was to create something that's just more general about what the board's responsibility is in evaluating a superintendent on an annual basis. So that there's some kind of, you know, standards set out, but then there's a separate tool and, and then we can have the conversation whether there's, you know, a guide, guidelines or a handbook that exists to, to support the use of that tool. But um, that's sort of how I went into this and saw this policy, how I saw this policy living. Uh, trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm thinking, I don't think we do have a policy that says the Board of Trustees is accountable for the approval of a strategic plan. I don't think we have that, do we? Because that is, that is one of the primary duties of the Board of Trustees is to, you know, establish the long-term plan for the district. So if, and I'm just throwing this out, um, and I'd be happy to play with some language and if folks want, but if that is um, agreeable to board members, we could have the policy be, um, and I haven't got the language in my head, but um, related to the establishment of a strategic plan with, um, you know, measurable outcomes for student performance, financial management, whatever, whatever you want to have in it or not have in it, but that the board would approve a strategic plan. And that, and then in a subsequent part, we would have the discussion of, uh, regular monitoring of the, of the performance. And then, um, just a statement that the superintendent's, that the evaluation of the superintendent's performance shall be aligned with the adopted strategic plan and the performance measures, uh, for the district. Something like that. I'd be happy to play with language, but just wanted to throw that out because start with the strategic plan, which is the board's responsibility. And then, um, and then tie the, just a simple statement that the, that the evaluation would be aligned with it.
You, trustee Cottle and then Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I agree with everything that's been said so far. The way I look at it is any tool that we decide to use is very similar to what a admin reg would be to a board policy. So, uh, the board policy almost sets the table for what the board decides to do. And I would think the broader, the better. And then the board can choose to use any tool it sees fit to actually complete the, the evaluation task. While also staying compliant with, with the board policy. And I agree with trustee Simon Holland on the strategic plan piece of it as well. So, so far I'm in agreement with everything that's been said.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. Vice President Taylor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'm going to, um, I guess I'm going to co-sign as well, my, my initial, when I put my hand up, I was going to speak to, I think, uh, the, I think general is better. Um, you know, having been on the board for quite a while, our, our evaluation process has changed often. In various different directions and I think the more specific we get in this policy around it, uh, the more cumbersome the whole thing and misaligned, in fact, it's going to be. And I do think, I like the idea of including the strategic plan as well. So, um, I'm certainly, um, um, in support of the type of policy that trustee Simon Holland mentioned that talks about the strategic plan, our responsibility from the strategic plan, our responsibility in terms of, uh, evaluating the superintendent. Um, and that the two should, uh, should be aligned. Uh, I'm in support of something like that. Um, as I see her playing with language, um, as, as I speak.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. Trustee Manetto, do you have any thoughts before we turn it over to staff?
No, I agree with what has been said. It seems to only make sense that it's in align to me. Thank you.
Superintendent McNeil.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I am, um, I go back to the title, to what Chief Rombardo was speaking to and in alignment with trustee Simon Holland and, and the rest of the trustees. So I'm wondering, so I'm just going to throw this out there. So board policy ninety eighty one, are, are we talking about monitoring of the superintendent's performance? That's the title of the policy. And then adding, uh, under the purpose, because I think that's, that, that's the reason why you want this policy, um, to go through the Board of Trustees, monitor the progress of the superintendent's performance and its balanced governance model goals and standards. In order to have coordination toward achieving the district's values, mission, vision, strategic plan goals and balanced governance model standards. So we add the verbiage in there regarding the strategic plan. Because right now we just have strategic goals and I think in order to make it more concrete, you actually may want to articulate that it's against the strategic plan.
I was just going to say, trustee Simon Holland, I, um, wasn't sure if you were looking for something a little more substantial than just the mention of the strategic goals, plan.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, um, was just playing with, um, that the, the title of the board policy would be establishment of a strategic plan or to the plan or something like that. Um, and it's not necessarily just about the superintendent because it's also, as is mentioned in the policy currently, it's the board, you know, evaluating its own performance. But, um, you know, the purpose might be something like the Board of Trustees is responsible for the adoption of a strategic plan for the district, which reflects the adopted district values, mission, vision, strategic goals. I added performance objectives because there's only five strategic goals in the strategic plan and the superintendent is going to want to have a lot more specificity. They aren't even measurable, the strategic goals that we currently have. And balanced governance model standards. Um, and then I would just add to the per the board, um, something like recognizes that regular monitoring of performance is necessary for, um, the effective execution of the strategic plan, something like that. I'd be happy to play with it and, you know, and send it around to everybody. So, you know, I, I hear Kristin's, um, suggestion was have it be about the evaluation and reference the strategic plan. And I'm kind of flipping that and saying it's about the strategic plan, which is the board's responsibility. That's my thought.
Thank you, I think that makes a lot of sense. And does that in, in your mind, take out, uh, reference to balanced governance in this, uh, policy? Do we, do we keep that still?
I would, I would keep that, I would keep that in there, I, I put it in the purpose.
Yeah.
I just added, um, something like performance objectives. I don't know how you want to, you know, how you want to put that to language, but it, it needs to be more than just the strategic goals because we went, we went too far with putting performance measures in, but we don't want to eliminate them entirely. And that is, you know, we do have the, the, we would also put in this policy the expectation that, that would be regularly that, that would be regularly monitored, that progress would be regularly monitored. So that's my thought.
Chief General Counsel, do you have any thoughts on this at this point?
No thoughts. No.
No thoughts.
Just kidding. I have been taking notes and I've also been trying to read other policies to make sure that I can answer the board's questions. 9051 is an interesting policy, and it does talk about protocols, but what the board should do, but then it does not talk about strategic plans. So to Trustee Simon Holland's point, this would be probably a good spot to drop it in. It would flip the entire meaning of this policy as suggested, but if that's what the board wants to do, we could certainly work to throw language together pursuant to this discussion and come out with some language. And then we'll probably need to do this type of activity again as a board and just, you know, we'll just keep doing it. And maybe our discussion on evaluation will, the next agenda item will help also form this one, possibly. Those would be my thoughts at this time.
Okay. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you. So later on, or at some point, I'm going to make an agenda request that we talk about Board Policy 9051. That's, policy has come up multiple times so far this morning. So I think it'd be good for us to take a look at that one, just make sure it's in alignment with what we want. And then my question is actually going to be for Trustee Simon Holland. I just want to make sure I understand what you're thinking. Do you think, are you saying this policy is a standalone and the strategic plan fits into it? Or is this policy connected directly to the strategic plan that whatever board it is decides on?
I'm, I'm suggesting that the, that this policy would articulate that the board has a strategic plan and that it district values, mission, vision, strategic goals, and balanced governance model standards. Somewhere, we'd also want to put that it has performance objectives in it, measurable performance objectives in it. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that answers your question. And I was just saying that, that it, because monitoring the performance of the strategic plan is connected to the superintendent's evaluation, we could have, we could have that be referenced here as well. Or that's a separate policy. You know, it could be two policies, but the reference in this policy would be to the strategic plan, and then it would reflect whatever other board policy dealt with the superintendent's evaluation. And it would say the superintendent's evaluation is to be aligned with the adopted strategic plan.
It did answer my question. So my thought was, is that would this policy have to change or be amended anytime a strategic plan was adopted? But it sounds like what you're saying is this policy essentially sets the table that the board does have a strategic plan, and this is what it needs to include. And so it will encompass whatever strategic plan is decided at a given time versus this policy has to keep changing with the strategic plan. Because what my concern is, is that things are too connected. If one gets changed and another, and something else doesn't get changed, now it's out of alignment versus having the umbrella effect to where this is the policy and everything's got to fit underneath it, or else you got to change the policy versus having a strategic plan and a policy that are essentially equal. You forget to change one, now you're out of alignment. And I think that's happened in the past with regs, policy, strategic plan, everything is, is equal. And so if you have to change them all at the same time time versus, how to approach, then you work your way down, almost like an upside down triangle. So that definitely answers my question. So thank you.
Counselor, did you want to comment on what Trustee Cottle just said?
I do. So I agree with Trustee Cottle, and I think that makes sense. And I know Trustee Simon Holland agrees as well. The one thing I want to mention now, if we make this change, what we could do is go back to 9080 and put the evaluation process in there. My thought would be, if you look at 9080, which I know we approved this morning, but we always reopen it. 9080 is, the name of it is Employment and Duties of Superintendent Performance. We took out the evaluation piece of this because it so overlapped with the current one that we're looking at. But now if we made the current one, 9088, a strategic plan, an assessment of the board, we could, an assessment of the board and superintendent's performance of the strategic plan, which is what I understand Trustee Simon Holland to say, what we could do is say, here's the strategic plan, not the specifics of it, but we have one, and we are going to assess how we as a board do under the strategic plan, and we are going to assess how the superintendent performs under the strategic plan, and then reference the actual evaluation in 9080. That actually would fit really nice. I, just in my opinion. So throwing that out there.
Okay. I also see, Emily, you have your hand up.
I think I'd just like to add on to what Neil was saying. I think that adding a reference to evaluation to 9080 makes a lot of sense. But there's also Policy 9060 that talks about the Board of Trustees' annual goals, objectives, and evaluation of the Board of Trustees. And so I wonder if some of the language that we're talking about related to formulation and monitoring of the strategic plan fits there. And then the superintendent's evaluation are covered in 9080, strategic plan is covered in 9060, and then we wouldn't have a need for 9081.
Just making it all more complicated.
The one, Emily brings a good point, and I'll throw even more fuel on her fire, which is we do have the 9075, which further talks about how the board, which is the one that we just adopted. But that further pushes along the idea of these initiatives will be served by the board, supported by the board, voted on by the board. So then you couple that with 9060. Maybe this one is, it's a, it's a good point.
Trustee Minneto and then Superintendent McNeil.
Boy, thank you, Madam President. Listening to all this, I just think, in my mind, the simpler, the better. And the less, it's kind of like Andrew was saying, the less almost cross-referencing that can change so easily is probably better, so we don't have to change 100,000 policies in time. And we could just change one. Because it's like, I like what you all are saying. Thank you.
Trustee Cottle.
I can't see Neil on my screen, so I don't know what he's going to, his facial expression's going to be to this. How hard and how much time would it take to almost do an audit of our 9,000 policies to pull any policy that references the superintendent evaluation, board goals? Because now we, I, we got three policies that have been referenced, 9051, 9060, 9075. And it almost seems like we could do great work on 9081, 9080, but it's still out of alignment. How hard and how much time would it take to essentially audit 9,000s just for board, essentially goals, superintendent evaluation, anything to do with strategic planning?
Well, if, if the board, if the board, which you probably couldn't do under this item, but we could definitely put it on the agenda and the board passes it, and the superintendent says that's our priority, we probably could get it done pretty quick. How long is quick? I don't know. Couple, it's huge. And the thing is, it's board governance, so it was adopted by Dr. Osberry, so we have that issue as well. And, and there is a lot of overlap. And that was one of the concerns that I weighed in on when these were adopted. And I know he does this as a national model, but there is some overlap between these. And I'm not sure we actually they're just long. It would take some time that, for example, that 9051 is, I think, 12 pages, 10 pages. Another policy, 17 pages. They're big. So it would take some time to go through, but we could, we could get it done if that's, you can't take that action today. That would be outside the scope of the agenda. But if it's a future agenda item, and you asked us to audit the 9,000 series, we could pull that together. I would probably just do it myself, because it, because this is where I work mostly. My, so my, my team who's great, I wouldn't be able to really utilize them on this, because even though Chris actually was a huge help on these. Because I would want to make sure they're consistent. So we just want one set of eyes looking at it. That would be the delay.
Okay, that makes sense. And I, and I would totally understand that it wouldn't be quick. So I guess I'll lean on you on what's our best course of action. If we clean up the policies we have today, we get going on the strategic plan, talking about that with the superintendent's evaluation, is that still going to be, is that still good, going to be good work? Or are we still in a really bad position with having too much conflict? Or how are we, how is our, what is our best way forward to get this cleaned up while also understanding we have to evaluate superintendent every year, and the district keeps moving along? And this sounds like it's a tremendous undertaking to get this cleaned up to completion?
I think the priority for the board is by contract to get a evaluation in place. And whether that evaluation is exactly written as this policy is or not is irrelevant. It's a contract. We need to fulfill that contract. And the longer that the superintendent stays in her position without knowing her objectives, her KPIs, whatever term you, you all decide to use, I think that puts the district in the worst position. I think our goal right now should be, let's get a evaluation process in place. We can fix up this 9081, since we, I think, agree that the evaluation will be consistent with the strategic plan, or you all agree. And then we worry about the 9,000s down the road. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thanks, Madam President. I was just going to suggest the same thing, that we, we do need to give Dr. McNeil the ability to know what the evaluation process is ASAP. But we can take that action separately and then have the policy conform to the degree that we want it to and to the level of detail that we want it to, to what we decide in terms of an evaluation system. So yeah, I think maybe we just don't take any action at all on 9081, and we move on to, to the evaluation discussion. And then just take action to say, this is what we're using this year for the evaluation, or whatever else actually may come out of that.
Superintendent McNeil.
Thank you, President Raymond. So I just want to point out some, I don't want to say concerning, but for some reason, and I don't know if, if this was because we kind of put together some policies or something like that, but there's, there's reference in here to formative assessment, when I just want to be careful about using that term, because in the academic world, formative assessment is something very, a little bit different than what's in this policy. So that, that's just one thing. And then under 2D, we start talking about policy implementation. And so I'm wondering, to Emily's and Neil's point, as far as plucking some of these out and putting them in, there's a whole section in here that talks about policy implementation and the fidelity of policy implementation. And I don't know, I mean, if you all aren't too ready to take action, then this is probably for null, but just to be aware of that, that this entire section in here talks about policy implementation. And so it's a little bit confusing as to the purpose, again, for this policy. And then under I, "A new superintendent shall provide formative assessment reports beginning from the superintendent's appointment date." So just to keep that in mind, if we're not going to do anything with this policy, totally fine, but that's in there. And then under I, little 2, "The previous superintendent's formative assessment data may be used to drive future decisions." There are just a couple of things in here that I just wanted to highlight. But if you're not going to take any action, then I guess, not really, but I just wanted to bring that up.
If I could just ask quickly, and I don't know who could answer this, but possibly Trustee Taylor or Vice President Taylor, I guess I didn't realize the history of these. So our staff did not write these policies. The policies came from Osberry and were just adopted the way that he presented, or you know, maybe with minor adjustments or something.
I'm going to say yes and no. They were, they were Osberry's recommendations as we, as we decided as a board back whenever that was, to, to adopt and adhere to the balanced governance way of doing business, quite frankly. And one of the things that he did was take a look at our policies and made some recommendations on how the policies should be written in alignment with, with balanced governance. Then he came back and we had, I think it was a two-day work session at that point, going over his recommendations. We made some changes, you know, made some tweaks, some changes on the kid. Great, I beg what you say, but this is how it works better with this. So it was really kind of a, it was a, you know, working together, and worked, and we worked really closely with David at that time.
And I don't, I have zero problems with balanced governance and Tom Osberry and all that work. And I don't want to unravel, you know, any of that, and especially knowing how much time you all spent creating this. But I also, I don't know how well this, to me, it feels like this current, I mean, just, I had a bunch of different notes on, on items similar to what Superintendent McNeil brought up, but I just couldn't figure out why they would exist in, to me, again, what I saw as an evaluation policy. But it does make more sense to me now, understanding the history, that they were not written by our staff, that they were, is, and, and I can see where he would want certain things, I guess. But, Trustee Cottle.
My, my recommendation would be to either just do nothing on 9081, take action on what we want the superintendent's evaluation to look like this year, and then create a future agenda item to essentially audit the 9,000s for this topic. And then, however that's worked out, potentially weed out any other conflicts that we see. This, this seems like it's going to be an ongoing thing for a while, where we're going to find conflicts. But this is a very important topic and not a kind of issue that you want with conflicts and policy. We're talking strategic plan, board governance, superintendent's evaluation. So whatever we have to do today to get us on the right path for this year, so Dr. McNeil knows what to expect, is probably what we should do. And then take on the undertaking of trying to clean up things over in the coming months and maybe even year or something like that. So that'd be my recommendation. Else I feel like our wheels are going to be spinning for a while, trying to figure out how to do this right now, here and now.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland. Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland. Oh, and then sorry, trustee Taylor, or Vice President Taylor.
Angie, did you need?
You go ahead. I can jump in. That's okay.
Just, it's, it would be really helpful to have, you know, copies, hard copies of the related policies, because it's really hard, you know, jumping back and forth. And I certainly, even after three and a half years, I don't have enough remembrance of the nine thousand series policies to be able to, to call upon them. So I think the, the review is an excellent idea. Thank you, Andrew. And I do think that I'm not prepared to be able to do anything with nine oh eight one today. So I would, I would support the, you know, the direction that's being discussed. But I would ask that when we do go back, that we have a way, you know, maybe a binder or something, so that we don't have to be trying to juggle screens to find, you know, those other policies. Because I, I, I can't be helpful because I don't, I can't find them. And I don't know where to look for, you know, the specific language that's being addressed. So that would be helpful to me. Thank you.
Welcome, student representative Noble. I'm so glad you could join us.
Thank you, President Raymond. Sorry for my.
You missed some real, real.
Vibrating stuff.
Conversation.
Riveting, riveting.
Riveting, that's a better word, riveting, yeah. Chief General Counsel, Rob Bardot.
No, it's my turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right.
Vice President.
Vice President Taylor.
No, that, I was just, I was, it's okay. I was just gonna say, I guess my recommendation doesn't, doesn't vary too much from trustee Cottle's. One, we have to deal with what's now. Of absolute fairness to Dr. McNeil and everyone else, quite frankly. So we have, we have a way forward for what's happening this year. And I think as we look forward, I agree, this is not the time to, in my mind anyway, to go, to go any further on nine zero eight one at this point. I like what, what trustee Simon Holland said about, man, I hate to go old school, but it would be great at this time just to be able to toggle back and forth. So I mean, I've got, well, right, I have three different things open right now. And, and doing my best to stay with it. But I just don't have the, the, the quick recall that, that I can participate in this as much as I would like to. And then I also think that we have to, we have to look at, I, Dr. Osberry made the recommendation on the policy, but they were, as, as I recall, they, we put a lot of work, not, not just, ooh, we spent two days, but a lot of this stuff was rewritten to better fit. So I think it's a better, it's a better way to say that he made the recommendations than we make changes. So it wasn't, hey, here's your policies. Okay, great, thanks. It was, it was much more interactive than that, as I recall. But it was also good for us at that time, right? Things changed, times changed, people changed, the whole thing. And so it's gonna take, it's gonna take a really big look at it, I think, from that standpoint, which we can't do at this moment. And I would recommend as, as the president, maybe a conversation with Dr. Osberry as we jump into that, to kind of get our arms around that piece. And I'm happy to participate with you since I was here when that happened. Kind of get our arms around that as we look forward, as we look to what we will do moving forward, what we will do next. But I think we have to look at what's now, and then look at what do we do now, and then what do we do next.
Thank you. Great suggestion.
See, Nathan, that was riveting, man. That was riveting.
Now, Chief General Counsel.
During, Dr. Taylor.
I, I see that trustee Simon Holland has her hand up. Do you want to do trustees first? Start, okay, no, okay. So here would be, here would be my suggestion on this is, I do think we should put on a board agenda. You can't do it here today because it's not contemplated. But there are, to Dr. McNeil's point, there are requirements in this nine zero eight one that she's supposed to do, such as file these reports, et cetera. I'm not sure, from listening to this discussion, I'm not sure the board really wants this at this time. So what I would suggest is that we put on a future agenda. And you can't vote on this, but I, I'm throwing this out there, I guess, to the president, a suspension of this nine zero eight one. I'm not sure we want her doing this busy work. And frankly, I'm not sure the board has contemplated what's in this entire policy. Then we go back to nine zero eight zero, and we just say, she will be evaluated. Now, we can reopen nine zero eight zero. And then you adopt the evaluation tool today, or start that discussion today. And this way, it's clean. But to, to have nine zero eight one sitting out there, I think we would all agree, it would be unfair to say, Dr. McNeil, we basically had a big conversation about how we're not really sure what to do with this nine zero eight one, but you didn't follow it. And so now we're gonna ding you for it. I, I think that's kind of rough. It's not very respectful as an employer to an employee.
I think that's a very good point. I, I completely agree. And I, I would like to, when we finish this discussion, reopen that nine zero eight zero agenda item two point two point two, right?
Zero two, yeah.
And, and I think there is good reason to bring at a future agenda, a future meeting, nine zero eight one. So trustee Cottle.
Yeah, this is for, thank you, it's for Chief General Counsel. So we have nine zero eight one opened right now. It was agenda. So how come we can't suspend it? Is it because the agenda item wasn't written as a, contemplating suspending it?
Yeah, you could, you, the agenda item's written that you could forward it to the board. And so you could forward it to the board and say that we want to suspend it, but you can't suspend it today. So forward it to the board for that purpose? Does that make sense?
It does. And then we can suspend it at our next board meeting, right?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. So then I'd be looking for a motion, unless we need to talk about this particular item anymore. Looking for a motion to trustee Cottle just said it, basically. I'm gonna make trustee Cottle make the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna give it a shot. I move with the Board of Trustees, move board policy nine zero eight one to the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees for consideration of suspension.
Second.
Motion by trustee Cottle, second by trustee Minetto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. I think we've been sitting here for about two hours. So I think this might be a good time to just take a quick break. And then when we come back, we can reopen agenda item two point two, if that works for people. Okay, 10 minutes, 15 minutes? 15, 15 minutes. And then we'll come back. Thank you.
Just.
All right, we are, I think, all here. So I will call the meeting back into session. And so Neil, I, do I just ask that we reopen agenda item two point two? Is that all I need to say?
Yep.
Okay. So at this time, we will reopen agenda item two point two, which, just for a little background, Scott, and for anyone else who's joined us, we discussed agenda item two point two earlier and made some decisions around it. But we have now decided, based on some of the discussion around agenda item two point five, to go back up to two point two and reopen it. So two point two is discussion and possible action to direct the superintendent to forward to a future meeting of the Board of Trustees proposed revisions of board policy ninety eighty employment duties of superintendent performance formerly entitled hiring and monitoring superintendent performance, which revises language related to the hiring of the superintendent for possible action. And Chief General Counsel, Rob Bardot, do you want to?
Sure. You want me to take it over?
What you suggested, yeah, in the last.
Okay. So, sorry to take up so much time this morning on board policies. I know we want to still get to the evaluation, so I will try to be quick. Since we decided that nine zero eight one is bigger than we want to tackle at this point in time, and we do need to get an evaluation process in place for the superintendent, whose start date is, you know, a month's already passed. It was retroactive to four twenty eighth, so we're already a month done. So we're one twelfth of the way through the first year. So we need to have something on, on the books. So JJ, if you could flip to the second page for us, and thanks again for putting these up. Thank you. So you'll see, excuse me, we had taken out paragraph three, which dealt with evaluation and performance monitoring. We did that because, as I explained earlier, we felt that it overlapped significantly with nine zero eight one. So we were trying to create consistency so that we could avoid the back and forth that we've all been talking about today. And, and you're right, paper is way easier than computers, in my opinion. I still use paper as a side note, and Sarah and Chris laugh at me all the time, but for me, it works. So that being said, what we could do is kind of reinstate that paragraph three, something along the lines of, and, and again, I will just bring this to you at the board meeting, but what I think we should do, because we need to get it on the books that we're going to evaluate the superintendent, is we maybe put evaluation, powers and duties. We talk about the power and duty in A. And B, and then we put in there a simple line that says, the consistent with the contract and through board action, the board will adopt, or the board will evaluate the superintendent. And this way, it's an evaluation tool that can be adopted either today or whenever the board does come up with one. And we don't have to worry about all of the, which I think the board agree with, the busy work that was found in nine zero eight one, all the little reports and things of that nature, but a more formulative process that, or, yeah, formative process that this board likes and adopts either today or at the next work session. So we just add a sentence into that paragraph three, basically that the board will evaluate the superintendent. And maybe consistent with the contract, I'll, I'll come up with language, but I would like some guidance that the board likes that idea and that the board would like it to be added to that paragraph.
Thank you very much, Neil. Trustee Minetto.
I like that idea, and I think it should be added. I, I am just all into simplicity, if we can do it. I think everything's easier to read for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Student representative Noble, did I see your hand up to make a comment? Okay. Trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I agree. This would be a good place to house this information. A question I had, is the timeline of the evaluation referenced in this policy? Or is that somewhere else? Because I've seen December being thrown out there. I know December is a traditional time. It isn't one year into the superintendent's term. And it will not, it will not really include much, because we won't have metrics. And April twenty eighth is towards the end of the school year anyway. So I don't know if that is addressed in here, or if it is addressed somewhere else. I just keep seeing December noted.
The contract addresses it, and I think Emily will probably discuss that, at the, which I think is a great spot for it. Because as you pointed out earlier, you put stuff like that in policy, and you, let's say the board all agrees, we do it at a time. Well, you have a policy, you can't do it at a different time. So you don't ever want to really, you know, pigeon
No, that makes, that makes great sense. And I agree with that. So all this policy would be then is just the couple things that were noted earlier, and then, and just putting the, essentially the evaluation in, stating that it will be done, but the nuts and bolts of the evaluation, we would intend to have in a separate document that is in compliance with this policy. Is that, am I saying that right? Perfect, thank you.
Any other that fits what we needed to do at this point? So I don't have any other thoughts on this one.
Thanks, Madam President. I guess we're ready for a motion. To, I would move to amend board policy nine zero eight zero to include the language as proposed by Chief General Counsel, Rob Bardot. Situation of superintendent. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Simon Holland and a second by Vice President Taylor. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. Great suggestion.
Thank you, trustees.
You're gonna stay with us for all the rest of this?
I'll be here. I'm so active now, so. So thank you, everyone.
Can't just run away yet. Now we will jump down to agenda item two point six, which is discussion and action regarding the contractual requirement for performance evaluation of the superintendent of schools, including best practices and superintendent evaluation, timeline for goal setting, strategic plan reporting, and annual evaluation, evaluation criteria and format, and the process to be utilized for ongoing performance monitoring and annual evaluation. The presenters on this one are Superintendent Dr. Kristin McNeil, Chief Human Resources Officer Emily Ellison. Of course, our Chief General Counsel, Neil Robbardo is available. And just to, I guess, set things off, we did a little discussion, as I mentioned, about today's work session and what our goals were for this. And just want to be sure that they understand that this agenda item at this time is not meant as a huge deep dive into creating a new evaluation tool or altering, you know, in major ways of the evaluation tool. But really for us as a board to discuss, where do we want to move forward with evaluation, with the evaluation, both for the current year for Superintendent McNeil, but in the future too. So we do not see this as being a conversation that is all wrapped up today. It's going to continue on, I'm sure, in the future work sessions. So just keep in mind, I guess, that you don't have to feel like we're spending today's meeting creating and finalizing an evaluation tool that will be used, you know, forever and ever. And I, and I know that Superintendent McNeil, in her into kind of the specifics of what she's looking for out of this discussion.
Thank you very much. I caught the ball and carrying it now. Thank you very much, President Raymond, members of the board. I'd also like to introduce I don't know that I'm gonna be doing this, so I'm hoping that they're all ready to go. But just so that everyone is aware, I also have our chief academic officer, Deb Biersdorf, and then our chief accountability officer, Mr. Ben Hayes, to help guide the conversation as well when we get to that point. And then we have the illustrious Miss Emily Ellison, who has put together a stimulating PowerPoint, very interactive, lots of graphics, very cool. To guide us through initial process. And, and just to reiterate, this is just the beginning conversation of this. And we know that have to have an evaluation this December from progress from when I was April twenty eighth. So it's really two evaluations as we move into this set. And then determination on what you would like to evaluate me on this year and going into the 2021 school year as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Emily.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Thank you, President Raymond, and members of the board. The credit for all the cool graphics really goes to Ben, and he doesn't know it, but I stole one of his presentation and just swapped out graphics, but I loved his formatting, so. JJ, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, please. JJ, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, please. Awesome, thank you. Um, Molina, as we move through, it's a little bit difficult with the PowerPoint showing to see all of the hand raising, um, and the images for each person. So feel free to interrupt me if I'm carrying on too long and somebody has something that.
No problem, I will keep my eye out and look for those.
Okay, great. Well, I think you all did a nice job of kind of setting this stage, but, you know, really the, the origins of this conversation are from having a new superintendent. And we have a convergence of factors, like the expiration of our strategic plan, obviously, the dynamics related to the COVID nineteen pandemic and its subsequent metrics and finances. It really does make sense to begin the conversation around the super evaluation process, both for this first evaluation in December twenty twenty and then ongoing. JJ, if you wouldn't mind going to the, to the first slide, please. When I was preparing my thoughts for each of these slides, I realized I probably should have titled this slide something else, because really, in general, this slide is reflective of the goals for this evaluation and not evaluation goals more broadly. So if there were any evaluation experts out there looking at the slide, they probably thought I really missed the boat and included some really important, important elements of evaluations in general. But really, this was meant to frame the conversation today. And I think we focus of the conversation a bit, uh, in, in this way. I mentioned some of the factors that make this the right time for this conversation. This slide is really about some of the process considerations as we move forward. Excuse me. While other licensed personnel evaluations are largely defined in statute, evaluations for district superintendents are defined in concept in employment agreements, and the contract between superintendent and the Board of Trustees, uh, in our district is no different. Dr. McNeil's contract provides for this as well. Both formative and summative evaluation process, and we'll talk about the details of that in just a moment. But as a part of this conversation, we believe there's also an opportunity to align timelines for strategic plan reporting, superintendent progress monitoring, and the summative evaluation process. Uh, as time is an ever diminishing resource, we really were trying to think of ways to maximize our use of it, and we'll go through a sample timeline in just a minute. The supervaluation process, excuse me, the superintendent evaluation process has evolved over time, and stakeholder feedback has indicated that there may be some opportunity to streamline the process. So that's one other important component of this conversation. And then finally, when we talk about performance evaluation, we, of course, should always be attentive to the role and importance that objectivity play as a foundation for both a valid and a valuable process for trustees and the employee being evaluated. JJ, would you mind going to the next slide, please? This slide summarizes the contractual requirements outlined in Dr. McNeil's employment agreement with respect to performance evaluation. And as you can see, it calls for quarterly progress reviews and an annual performance evaluation to occur no later than December fifteenth of each year. While the evaluation form and process are adopted by the Board of Trustees, input from the superintendent is an important component of that. Opportunity for that input is also spelled out in the agreement. Um, when we think about the contractual requirements for evaluation, something else to consider, and trustee Cottle touched on this a bit ago, but the, this is really kind of a unique year in that Dr. McNeil is due an evaluation in December of twenty twenty, but was contracted April twenty eighth. And so really, we have a six to seven month timeframe to contemplate and define an evaluation process for, uh, that reflects work done May through November of this year. Um, and then the evaluation would occur in December twenty twenty. So obviously, that's a little bit different than a typical annual, annual evaluation scenario in that the time, the reflected time period is shortened. Um, and also, uh, we have a situation where we're crossing over school years when we're looking at that time period. JJ, if you would go to the next slide, please.
All right, sorry, I just noticed, uh, Vice President Taylor has her hand up. Vice President Taylor, are you?
I was sorry. Mute. Okay, you hear me? Yep. All right. Um, uh, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Emily. Just a quick question, as you talk about the, uh, the timeframe. Now typically, you said from, uh, from May till November, because that's, he's kind of gotten higher than the middle here. Um, but, and we, but we typically do it from school year to school year. So would this evaluation not be, um, from May and June? And then we start the twenty, we start the evaluation for twenty twenty one in, uh, July?
It certainly could be, um, as we were contemplating options, and that's definitely a discussion point to have today, regarding what we, what we want to do for the December twenty twenty evaluation. I do think it's somewhat difficult, uh, when you're thinking about a summative evaluation to look at such an abbreviated time period. So that's kind of why we went down the road of thinking the May through November timeframe. But again, I think when we contemplate what would be included in the evaluation, if there, you know, if there are sufficient data points or, um, you know, elements to comprise a comprehensive evaluation that cover just the, the conclusion of this school year, then that's something certainly that can be defined.
Yeah, no, and I recall, when you first began, you, you talked about some of the timing, and trustee Cottle did as well, because it happens late in the, in the, in the calendar year, uh, close to December. My, my only concern around it is if we extend to November for this year, then that puts us on the calendar of always extending until November, as opposed to, um, returning to, if it's the board's desire, returning to an evaluation period being from school year to school year. And the whole idea, of course, waiting until, you know, later in the year, November, December, uh, November, December, because it's by December, whatever, it doesn't have to be in December. It's because the final, um, graduation numbers typically come out, um, in October-ish. So it's just a matter of if, to, to me, if we, if, if we don't, if, if we, if we go through November this year, that means we're saying we're going to go through November every year, because otherwise, we're gonna double evaluate the period of time from July to November in twenty twenty.
Well, that, that's definitely, um, something to consider. Uh, I think when we get a little bit further into, um, some of the ideas that we've, um, proposed, while you're right, there will be some overlap in time period if we go through November and then pick up on a regular schedule of basing it on a school year moving forward. One of the other ideas we had related to that was to develop a tool and a process for this year, for this abbreviated time period, and then have, um, a, a different process for the, the moving forward process.
I hear you.
Yeah, so, so to your, not necessarily evaluating the same data twice, while the time periods might overlap some. We felt like, again, because it's, you know, six or seven months worth of data versus a full twelve months, it's not tied to school year, that maybe this December twenty twenty process would, um, look a little bit different. And then we would, uh, in this timeline that's displayed here, we would pick up on the regular evaluation schedule tied to school after that.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Trustee Cottle, and then, yeah, we've got a couple hands up. So trustee Cottle and then trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Going to piggyback on Dr. Taylor. It is worth noting that, um, some of the metrics that are used for the evaluation would not be available this year, because testing and certain things did not happen in this past spring. Uh, and with that, if we use those metrics, even if we overlap, I guess, some time periods between August and November, that would naturally take place if we use metrics in twenty twenty one, spring of twenty twenty one, as far as potential test scores and all that. You would have natural overlaps based on when the metrics come out. So we do have to have a discussion about this year, because many, many of those metrics and staff would know which metrics specifically are actually not going to be available this year based up because of COVID nineteen.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm, I'm curious how, um, how and whether there is any, um, integration of, uh, Superintendent McNeil's, period from July first of twenty nineteen. I don't, I, I'm not sure how we integrate that, and if it's possible to do that by agreement so that we, we could stay on the timeline of, you know, it being, uh, uh, July one to June thirtieth, because financials are also a key component, and those aren't done until, you know, year end isn't completed until the audit's done, usually reported in November. So I'm just curious how, how the July one twenty nineteen through April twenty seventh, uh, twenty twenty plays into all this, and whether there's an opportunity by agreement to make an exception and have that period also be part of it.
I think there is an opportunity, um, and I think it's the next slide, maybe the slide after. Um, when we talk about the December twenty twenty evaluation and some ideas related to that, I do think there are potentially some strategic plan metrics that would be reflective of the nineteen twenty period that, um, could be pulled into whatever's developed for this abbreviated period. I think one of the challenges and kind of why we went down the road of having, um, an abbreviated evaluation for this year and then the full process for next year and ongoing, was because of what trustee Cottle raised, um, the impacts to strategic plan metrics because of the COVID situation. I think we just have to be attentive to which metrics were utilized, but I do think there is some opportunity for that.
And if I might, Madam President, I, I would just say that some of those metrics are very favorable to Superintendent McNeil. So we wouldn't want to ignore the great, you know, improvement in many areas that occurred, uh, in that time period before April twenty eighth.
That makes sense.
Well, thank you so much. I think, um, there, some of this will be addressed, uh, moving forward in the slides, based on our conversation and kind of what the different options are that we can consider. So, um, good questions, and I'll keep watching for hands coming up, but I think we can look forward with you, Emily.
Okay, great. So with respect to this slide and, uh, proposed timeline, given that Dr. McNeil's contract provides for quarterly progress reports, and we also have a system for periodic strategic plan reporting, um, we thought there might be some, uh, opportunity to align timelines and maximize our use of resources. And, um, I think there's also an important consideration that while strategic plan metrics are certainly a component of the superintendent evaluation, in aligning, I do want to caution that we should not think of the strategic plan and the evaluation as one in the same, even if we are able to align reporting timelines, because the superintendent's evaluation goes beyond just the strategic plan reporting and, and the metrics included in that process. Uh, the graphic on the left of the slide provides kind of a high level overview of the process being suggested. So goal setting for the upcoming school year sets the stage for the superintendent's focus. Periodic strategic plan reporting and progress monitoring on that goal setting occurs throughout the year, and then the process concludes in a summative evaluation. And so in this model, we would begin with the superintendent goal setting process to be finalized in July of each year. And then throughout the year, strategic plan metrics and, um, progress monitoring on those goals would be reported in four meetings instead of three. And then the final quarterly report would happen in October of each year. As you mentioned, another trustee mentioned earlier, that's when we get, uh, much of our finalized data from the prior school year, including graduation rates, and then the superintendent's evaluation would occur in December. So December timing for the evaluation allows, of course, for complete data to be available for the prior school year. In the suggested timeline on the right, you can see the month of the activity, the particular activity that we're talking about, and then the related school year. Uh, and again, knowing that we have a, an abbreviated evaluation period to attend to in December twenty twenty, or potentially depending on what you all decide. Um, this, this timeline spells out the path to the cycle of goal setting, periodic reporting, and the annual evaluation, um, that, that we've typically been on. But like I said, it kind of gets us caught up to, to address this abbreviated year and then get us on, on the path ongoing. And, and I'll pause here for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Emily. All right, trustee Cottle.
Thank you, Madam President. Remind me, is the strategic plan quarterly updates that's contractual?
The strategic plan is currently on a trimester update system. We do it three times, three times a year, um, and that is not contractual.
Because I know, um, speaking as one trustee, uh, I, I would love to hear more, um, discussion in board meetings about student metrics and student performance. I think quarterly is great, but I think what we, what, at least what I've found beyond the board, you get almost like a data dump in a very short period of time, a lot of information. And I don't know, I think at times, we don't maybe dive in as much as maybe we would have, just because it gets to be so long. So if it's information, and essentially, in more board meetings, we can actually have more discussion. Uh, what comes to mind is most recently, we had a long discussion about math proficiency, and I think we had more great discussion to have, but I think we moved on because it all in, when I think this is a big part of what we do as a, as a board, is student, student metric, student performance, which is all built in the strategic plan. So something maybe for future discussion on, do we want to do it quarterly? Or do we want to do more of that in our board meetings? I would, I would like to see more of it, honestly, but thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. Yeah, that was some. Superintendent McNeil and I had some conversation following our Silver State Governance Workshop about looking at that as a, a possibility, just to, um, spread it out throughout each meeting a little bit more. And, and I think I'd, I'd be interested in seeing what that might look like as well. It's, um, I know with the uncertainty, you know, where, where our meetings have been just a little wonky, but I, I think it would be worth looking at, so. Trustee Manetto.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I would be in total agreement with that. In, my question is, if we have this timeline laid out, does that mean we have to stick with it? Or is it, I mean, Kristen, would it be really hard on you if we said, hey, can we find out about, you know, the data on blah, blah, blah? Uh, you know, um, like, you know, how does Title One affect? How does, you know, just, just to get the data on other stuff as we go along? Is that too hard, or is that stuck within this picture? And just for us to know, not part of your evaluation as such? Thank you.
Would you like me to respond, President Raymond?
Yes, please. We don't need to be so formal. Please go.
So, and, and I appreciate that, that trustee Manetto. I, I would just ask, and, and I think it, it helps you all, just as much as it helps our staff, that we, we get to the point where we are able to put a calendar together. And I know we're talking about a, a wide-based calendar, but I think it would be better structurally, if we could get to the point where we actually put an annual calendar together, as far as what type of data you would like to see and, and when. Because I, I don't want to just, um, kind of throw things to the wall and see what, what sticks. So if that, if, for example, you use Title One, we need time to make sure that that, you know, that, that, that's actually a metric that, that's going to be used. So I would just ask for more of a structured reporting schedule. And if it's something such as, I'm just going to throw this out as an idea, one board meeting a month, we have an item on there about a particular data point. So whether it is around, um, formative assessments in math, whether it's around, um, map testing, whether it's around, um, English language learner proficiency.
that we actually come with a very structured calendar. And I think that sets it better up in motion for you all as trustees to know, okay, I know that this is going to be coming up in the month of March, that we'll have this regular calendar.
I'm on mute. I see a thumbs up from trustee Cottle. I think that sounds great too. So I like that idea. Thumbs up from trustee Simon Holland as well. Vice President Taylor.
Yeah, I got like 25 screens open. So I'm trying to follow the power, Brian, and this is on the wrong, anyway, doesn't matter. First of all, yes, thumbs up, thumbs up. And then the next thing I would say to, to Kristin, since, you know, we can all be informal, that, that it would be helpful for us to, to find out from, from you what, what, what kind of, what makes sense. Because we, I don't want to ask for a metric for an example that this is truly not the right time to ask for that. Whereas if we wait three more months, we'll really have that data. You know, something like that. So, so if we take, if we do take, and take this, again, you're like your example, a meeting a month. Again, making this up. And instead of the quarterly reports that we have, we spread that out a little bit. We, we all know that, that every time we have an assessment on our board and on, on, on high performing boards, it's always connected to how much time they spend on student outcomes and so on. So this is actually a really good idea to spread that out, Andrew. But it would also, it would just be helpful if maybe staff made a recommendation to us on that. Because again, there's some, there's some timing that makes sense that we just wouldn't know. You know, same types of data. But what would make sense from a timing standpoint that we could, you know, then take a look at as a board and say, okay, great, let's, let's settle into this. Because I think you're right, we have to give you guys a calendar. We just can't come randomly pull up and ask for stuff. But if you have a calendar, which everyone seems to agree to, at least the majority of us, then we can make that happen. But I, I, I feel more comfortable asking you to make recommendations than for us to say, hey, this is what we want when.
No, absolutely, absolutely, trustee Taylor. We would, we would absolutely bring you that recommendation and this is how we would lay it out. And I would also just interject, I think, you know, the use of the Council of Great City Schools would be a wonderful resource for us to take a look at. We know that they have key performance indicators, KPIs, on the operational side, but they also have KPIs, key performance indicator there's on the ax to be able to look at those in conjunction with some of the data that you're asking for. I think would be something that, that would actually be very productive for the board to take a look at. So we will, we, we would be more than happy to develop a calendar and then bring it to the board as a straw man to poke some holes in. See if that's what you all would like.
Great work for me.
Trustee Manetto.
I often notice that we spend a lot of money on things, and I guess that's kind of where I'm interested is, is the money we're spending really paying off? And I know that that would be your, I, I agree, it's, it's your call, it's your recommendation. That makes sense to me. That's just what I popped in my head just now. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Manetto. You don't see any other Superintendent McNeil, are you have any more to add on that?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. I think Emily, if you're ready to move on.
All right. AJ, if you could go to the next. We begin to contemplate the process and the tool to be utilized in the December 2020 evaluation and in annual evaluations beyond. There are some general considerations I'd like to highlight. In the attachments for this item, there were some white papers and research evaluation intended to provide some foundational thinking. Thank you trustee Simon Holland for the resources that, that you shared as well. Those were extremely valuable. If you had an opportunity to review this information, each of those resources underscored the complexity of this process and the importance of ensuring that the evaluation is reflective of the dynamic and complex nature of the position, but is not so cumbersome or complicated that it can't be easily understood by stakeholders or ends up becoming a process of compliance and not value. I think we would all agree that we'd like to end up in a place where we have a process that trustees understand and can execute effectively, that, that, that our superintendent understands and finds value in, and that stakeholders understand in a way that leads to general confidence in the process. Much of the research shared also highlighted the really unique dynamic that is a body of elected officials providing a performance evaluation for one employee. And most other employment situations, it's a one supervisor providing a performance evaluation. And so that, of course, lends itself to additional complexities. You know, political pressures, individual priorities and other noise in the evaluation process can have a significant impact on whether or not it's perceived as a productive and valuable process for all stakeholders. And so defining a process that is as objective as possible with clear expectations and data sources for measuring performance is really imperative to the overall success of the evaluation. I mentioned a bit earlier that strategic plan metrics are likely one element of, of the performance evaluation. But it's also important to consider other leading indicators as well. So now we're in the box that says leading and lagging indicators. And for the benefit of those that are watching and maybe unfamiliar with those terms, many of our strategic plan metrics are generally reporting as lagging, reported as lagging indicators. That is their, their results in the rearview mirror. For example, I recently reported on our first day vacancy or in that, once it's done, it's done. Leading indicators, on the other hand, are often representative of the activities that we know drive particular outcomes. So in my example of first day vacancies, I want to continue to drive that number down year over year. That's a lagging indicator. Indicators in that they're the data points that I monitor to make sure that we're going to meet our goals. So for example, how many candidates are we outreach into on a daily basis? How many job fairs are we participating in? How many network or recruiting source connections are we building? So as I monitor the leading indicators and the number of candidates being generated, I should be able to anticipate what my first day outcomes will be. Along that line of thinking, monitoring leading indicators is important for several reasons. So first, it requires analysis of the outcomes that we desire, but also the path that we're going to take to get to those outcomes. The process of identifying the leading indicators is really important to that. And we identify high leverage activities that we believe will yield those expected results. And then we can focus our efforts on those things. The second reason that having a leading indicator focus is important is that it gives us an opportunity to course correct if need be. So if we're only focused on reporting what happened after it's done, we're not maximizing our six chances of success necessarily in reaching those goals. If we thought something would lead to a particular outcome and it's not, then we have an opportunity before we get to the end and are reporting the results to try something else. And then finally, leading indicators are the things that we can control. So if something entirely outside of our control negatively, we talked about some examples earlier with our current situation, you can still get credit, if you will, for your efforts if there's a mix of leading and lag. And then finally, as we think about the evaluation process and the tool to be utilized, I'd like to recommend that we're mindful of potential organizational impacts or unintended consequences. Again, just things to be thinking about as we move forward. So for example, if the, if the superintendent's evaluation is made up entirely of strategic plan metrics, it has the potential to create unintended, unintended tension for the owners of those metrics, who are also often direct reports of the superintendent. We must also consider what metrics the superintendent has an opportunity to directly or even indirectly influence. I know that in general, the CEO is regarded as someone who's responsible for everything in the organization. But to what extent should someone be evaluated on things that are outside of their control by design? And an example of that might be, you know, to what extent do we hold the superintendent responsible for hiring outcomes in an organization where many hiring decisions, many if not all hiring decisions have been completely decentralized? So that's just again, food for thought as we think about the process tool.
Thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt you. I think back when with leading and lagging indicators, trustee Simon Holland had a comment or question.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, I appreciate the discussion about leading and lagging indicators. Going back to the 90s and balanced scorecard out of the Harvard Business Review and did a lot of work in that. The two points I wanted to make, and one is that leading indicators are really important for the CEO and the staff to be mindful of. They tend to, in my understanding and my experience, be more related to activities. And in our quest to streamline, I would like for the evaluation process, different from monitoring for me is, is more, it's more important for us to look at the results of those activities. So rather than having this strategic plan, measuring those activities like recruitments, those are things that the CEO certainly needs to be making sure are happening. But in order to streamline, we want to, at the board level, look at what was the result that, that was achieved. So I would just, you know, I would just personally caution against having leading indicators be predominant or be, you know, featured a lot in the strategic plan and in the evaluation. Because those are activities and that's staff work that we should not be, you know, drilling down into. There is however, one leading indicator that even back, you know, 20, 30 years ago, was identified as one of the most important leading indicators, and that's employee morale and employee satisfaction. You know, the early research showed that, that financial performance and customer satisfaction was absolutely affected by, and we know this, you know, we know it intuitively, but research shows that, that it's affected by employee satisfaction and employee morale. So that's a, that's a leading indicator that I hope we will make sure we include. But others, like your example of recruitment, being the leading indicator for results of, you know, vacancies. I, I want to argue for us staying out of that business and, and delegating that to the superintendent. With the other side of that being that, you know, when you look at the organizational impacts, for example, I think you're absolutely right. We can't, the superintendent can't be, we, we have to be careful to calibrate the superintendent's ability to affect things like hiring. But then the superintendent does have to set the tone. Things won't change unless the superintendent says that increasing the diversity of our workforce is important. Now, she's not making those hiring decisions, but she has to set the tone for the organization so that the result is that we become a more diverse organization. So I just wanted to, you're right, superintendent doesn't make those hiring decisions, but she has to convey the principle that, you know, her expectation, that, principle with an E, that, that we will become a more diverse workforce. So just two points on that. Careful, careful about leading indicators because I think they're more activity oriented and the board should be in the business, the business of result orientation to me, in my mind. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Great feedback.
Well, just as a pointed clarification, what I'm sharing today is focused entirely on evaluation and progress monitoring. So I think you're right in terms of the level of detail leading versus lagging when it comes to the strategic plan. I think that's a much different and bigger conversation. But I do think that when you contemplate evaluation systems, whether it's through progress monitoring in the evaluation, I think that making sure that we attend to kind of both sides of that equation provides, provides some balance, particularly for situations where, you know, there, there, there are substantial impacts to those lagging indicators. So, you know, how that, how all of that gets formulated is, you know, absolutely the, the purview of the board. But I just, I think conceptually, I wanted to plant the seed for the purpose of, of the discussion about the evaluation content.
If I might, Madam President, I just, I would just add a final thought that many times, those leading indicator activities are things that the superintendent will evaluate her staff based on, but not that the board will evaluate the superintendent on. Again, there are some, and I agree with you, there are some really important leading indicators such as employee morale and satisfaction. But many of them are things other people about, we're not evaluating her about. So I'm with you. I agree, they're both important.
And I think just with respect to the, the, you know, what the superintendent has direct control over, I think your point is absolutely taken. The, you know, what's selected for evaluation and the degree of control that the superintendent has over that shouldn't necessarily sway one side or the other, right? Just because she doesn't directly hire everyone doesn't necessarily mean there shouldn't be hiring metrics included in the evaluation. But, and as we consider some of the other organizational impacts just to have on radar, you're right. Those things become the priorities and they become kind of what's important organizationally. And so we just want to make sure that our systems and our philosophies are aligned around, around those types of things. Great. Okay, great, thank you. Um, from an organizational perspective, and I think on this a little bit, there's definitely a nexus between the evaluation, organization and identity priorities. So it's important to recognize that what's included in the evaluation will likely reflect what's important to the organization in some cases. Is there alignment in messaging and are there competing objectives? Those are all things that we need to in the evaluation process. The question of whether or not this process should be facilitated internally by staff or externally by a consultant is also a consideration. And then, of course, trying to minimize unintended consequences as we move through this process and staying mindful of those organizational impacts. Again, is really the reason that it was included on this slide here and just to keep these things front of mind as we move forward. Additional questions before I change slides? AJ, if you'd go to the next slide, please. So I mentioned that we had some ideas about December 2020. And again, this suggestion was created with the notion that we would use that timeline that was shared before or something like it to evaluate in December 2020 as outlined in the employment agreement, but reflect upon perhaps the May through November time period. Knowing that we're crossing school years, that we have really exceptional circumstances that we're dealing with, with respect to the pandemic and the impacts to, to the data and to the budget. And then with the goal of getting on a cycle of December evaluation based on prior school year results. And we thought that we, there might be an opportunity to take elements from the pathway to positive progress, from strategic plan metrics, from envisioned 2020, like we talked about before, maybe selected metrics. And I know in the next, I think it's the next item too, y'all are doing some work on kind of highest priority activities or initiatives for the remainder of this calendar year. And so the thinking here was to identify, you know, four to five to six kind of key priority areas and then develop an evaluation around those. And so if you think about each of these buckets, and this is definitely an example. But if you think about each of these buckets as being but if you think about each of these buckets as being, you know, the four to five most important things to focus on for this particular time period, then within each of those, you know, what are the focus areas? And having goals or expectations related to those, to that particular bucket. So if you think about the employee morale bucket, you'll see in the example, if we said, okay, employee morale, you know, needs to be of the highest priority during the next seven months. And this is one of the things that we would evaluate on. So then the board defining within employee morale, we think these, you know, two or three areas are kind of the highest leverage areas. So continuing to employee outreach and communication and then association communication, and then working with Dr. McNeil to define a goal or an X. So again, this is an example, kind of a conceptual example, but you could potentially incorporate selected goals from InVision 2020 to create the December 2020 process and then longer term have, you know, have the ongoing tool that would be reflective of a full school year and full year of strategic plan metrics and, and not as, not an abbreviated process, if you will.
All right, Emily, thank you so much. I see a question from trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate the, you know, the inclusion of that prior time period. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can have very, very prominently a part of this student outcomes and, you know, learning outcomes. I know it's going to be a struggle to do that because we won't have standardized testing. We won't have, you know, we won't have a lot of those normal, normal measures. So I just want to flag it that, and I know you have selected goals from InVision 2020, and that's probably where we were going to look at what the student outcomes are. But I think we have to be careful not to have it be too internally focused and, you know, and on too many administrative processes and really make sure that it's student focused and that student learning goals are the highest priority. So just wanted to, and I know that's on everybody's minds, but I didn't, it doesn't show up on the slide. And I know it's there, you know, implicitly for us, but just wanted to make sure that it's front and center for everyone.
Kristin, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, and I agree, trustee Simon Holland. And I think that that last box, the InVision 2020, it has so much wrapped up in there. I mean, that has, you know, the, even though we put FY '20 budget, obviously, within InVision 2020, just the measurement of the FY '20 financials as well. But then on the academic side, we do have the goals within there as far as, and I go back to your previous comment on another policy, that first goal is very wide when we're talking academic achievement. But whether it's looking at MAP, we don't have Sback, the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium assessment, but we do have, we do have MAP data. I mean, I think we just have to be careful on which metrics we're going to be using just as we look at that, that, yeah.
If I might, Madam President, I think it's absolutely, it's absolutely appropriate that all of these things be smoothed and calibrated for the dramatic time that we're in. I absolutely agree with that. And so that's going to be a big challenge for us all collaboratively to figure out how we, how we do that. But I also hope that we will have, as a part of the evaluation process, some opportunity, and I know you're doing this already, looking at distance learning. We, we're going to need to be building the future while we're evaluating what we're currently doing. So it's going to be a very different time. And I, I, you know, I just want to be on the record that I think we all recognize that. I think we can speak for everyone. But we're going to have to get a lot of information about how it went and how, how the learning has, has changed children's lives and what the outcomes are. Thanks.
And I think we'll, oh, sorry, Madam President, is it?
Yeah, if you want to respond to that, and then Nathan has a comment when you're finished.
And I think a good example of that trustee Simon Holland are the surveys that we have out in the field right now around the aspects of how the, the distance learning is going and it has impacted our students. So we've got that parent survey out now, we have the student survey out now, and we're actually getting some very, very good response rates. And then, as you all, as I sent that email last night, then we'll have the other survey out in the field next week as well. But to that point.
Thank you, trustee or student representative Noble.
Well, I think everything on this list definitely belongs on the list. But one thing that I would also make sure to take into consideration is in terms of student outcomes, equitability. Because as we know, COVID-19 has only exacerbated the circumstances that unequally affect different groups of students. And I don't know if it's something that should be a separate category or that should just be baked into every single one of these. But one factor that definitely needs to be taken into consideration is equitable outcomes for students in this and how well that goal is achieved. I'm not sure if that would be a lagging or a leading outcome, but I think that that's definitely worth consideration in the evaluation process.
Thank you. Kristin, is your hand up to respond to that or?
I mean, I forgot to take my hand down, but I don't like responding to that. And I agree with you, Nathan. I think what it, what, you know, what we could shape it to or maybe take a look at is the aspects of what the superintendent has done in order to take care of some of those issues and staff as far as equitable access. We know that we're not going to be able to solve everything within the time that distance learning, when we shut down in March. But, you know, strategies such as using our partners, using our nonprofits, food security, those types of things, devices, interconnect, you know, connectivity for our students. So maybe aspects as far as what we have done as a district in order to help that.
Thank you. Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So when we're looking at this chart for December evaluation, are we saying we're going to go back to July, April 28th? Because I know our policy says from the time of appointment, which should be April 28th, the ground we are on to go prior to that, Chief General Counsel may have to weigh in. Because some of this stuff was done prior to April 28th, like West Ed reporting. I just don't, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, we're on solid ground of when we should be looking at as far as timeline and what we should be considering. We're talking about evaluation. Do you want, Emily, do you want me to answer that or do you want to do it or?
If you could, that would be awesome. I think our initial thought, or at least in the earlier discussion, was that if strategic plan goals from prior to appointment were going to be included, that would be by agreement. But what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's the case. I, I think at this point, we have a contract. The contract is adopted on April 28th and it's from this point forward. If the board wants to review the past as the interim, then they should probably do that now. Or to Emily's point, you'd have to make an agreement and superintendent McNeil would have to say, sure, I'm fine with that. And because it wasn't contemplated, so that's my take on it.
And then trustee Cottle, just to expand on that, these are, again, just suggestions in terms of the bucket. So I know you mentioned the West Ed report and the fact that was already in motion prior to appointment. I think that work continues. So to include kind of West Ed post-April 28th, we would be okay. But again, you're certainly not tied to these buckets in terms of priorities and the, and the focus areas within each of them. This was just a starting point for the discussion.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's probably one of the first things that we should do is determine timeline. Because if we do nothing per contract, per our policy, it would be April 28th, 2020, and nothing beforehand. If we are going to consider something beforehand, that's the will of the board. We'd have to get an agreement with Dr. McNeil and we would want to do that ASAP. So we're not essentially springing any surprises as we get closer to December would be my recommendation.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. If I can just kind of give my thoughts on this, I have, you know, I think thought about it from the perspective of this current period of time. And I guess, going back to Vice President Taylor's comments at the beginning, it, in my mind, it, we were kind of talking, I was thinking of April to June 30, you know, and it is hard when you think about such a short period, especially to not kind of bleed into things that happened a little before or will happen a little bit after, I guess, for that type of an evaluation. I did, I kind of liked the idea that, you know, if we were to extend it, that it just be very separate from a traditional evaluation tool, which would be ongoing. So there'd be sort of two concurrent evaluations happening from July 1 to whatever, you know, November might look like, but, but kind of evaluating different goals. And maybe that, maybe that is too confusing. I don't know, but I, you know, I think trustee Cottle said this at one of our board leadership team meetings, I hope you don't mind if I say it, but, you know, we hired Kristin in April. And that, that essentially could, is the basis for evaluating her performance from July 1 up until April. You know, I mean, I don't want to say that that, you know, negates that we shouldn't have reporting on how that, you know, pathway to positive progress came, you know, about and the work that was done with it. And we did have that at our last board meeting, an update. I think, I worry a little bit just personally at this moment about us spending a lot of time focused on a short period or an evaluation when we could be really, and I think our time might be better spent looking at solidifying what we want out of an evaluation tool that, you know, will live beyond this and would be what we would put in place for July 1 through, July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. I, I recognize that we have to about, you know, by contract, we have to evaluate in December for the period of time, whatever we decide on. But I don't, I don't want that to detract us from what we also need to be focused on, which is creating and solidifying the evaluation tool. And the clock on that one, this technically would start ticking July 1. So, you know, we kind of have these two issues to consider. And that's how, you know, this agenda item is laid out. But I don't, I don't know how much, I, I guess, as trustee Cottle was saying, I think that one critical thing that we need to decide as a board, you know, is what is the timeframe for the the evaluation that we're going to be doing no later than December? And, and then, once we know what that timeframe is, then we can talk about these buckets and what we want to put in them. Because I, like I said, I just, I don't want to lose focus from this, the bigger picture of evaluation, which I see kind of living on, hopefully, you know, if we're going to put a lot of time and effort into it, it's not just a one-year thing. And so, and we've, and we've got a great start to it with previous work as well. All right. Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, as I think about this and where we are and a lot of the really good comments that have been said, you know, I, I'm, at this point, and I've bounced around a lot, at this point, it may be more beneficial for us with, with the things that we have to go on that are really critical as we look forward is to, by agreement, look at how the path to positive progress has, has been done and all of those things. But by agreement, don't do an official evaluation for, for basically May and June, right? Because it was the end of April when we officially hired superintendent McNeil. Because it's going to take a lot of time to get together what that, what's that going to look like and all of those things. And maybe that's time better spent. And we're going to do all of that for a two-month evaluation, unless we decide to go forward. But then again, it's, 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 it's still a different evaluation than the tool we're going to use moving forward for the reasons we know, for all the reasons we know, because it's, it's a different kind of year. And so maybe we really, we spend some time looking at what, what should our view of these past few months or what have you be, but not the same kind of detail and work that we would spend on an evaluation for this short period of time. And instead, put that same time into working on an evaluation that we will use moving forward. What President Raymond said and in recalling trustee Cottle's comments, we gave her one heck of an evaluation for the work that's been done because we hired her, because the work that been, that has been done has been tremendous work. And she earned every bit of that, right? She earned every bit of that, especially in the crazy year that we have right now. But when you look at all the things we have before, a strategic plan and distance learning and reviewing what we did with the one survey out now, the one that's going to become, we have a lot ahead of us. Budget things, maybe this is not really the, maybe the better move for us is to, hey, what kind of look do we want to, do we want to take at these past few months, this time of interim? Because we should do some, we should certainly should assess where we are. That's really important. But let's spend the hard, let's spend the time on the hard work of what do we want this thing to look like moving forward? My hand is no longer raised.
Thank you, Vice President Taylor. Trustee Minneto.
Thank you. I agree with that. I think if we just do something simple for these two months, if we can, is it two months, whatever, then really focus on what we want next year. We could go back as, from what I understand what Neil said, I think I'm understanding that right, if that's what we want to do. But yeah, let's, let's keep it simple right now is kind of what I'm thinking.
Thank you, trustee Minneto and trustee Cottle, and then Nathan Noble.
I just want to get clarification from Dr. Taylor. So Dr. Taylor, is what you're saying that we, with an agreement with Dr. McNeil, we essentially don't do a formal evaluation in December of 2020? We focus our time on putting the evaluation process together, doing a strategic plan, and then look to December 2021? Is that what you're saying?
That's essentially what, if I may, now That that's essentially what, if I may, Madam President. That is essentially what I'm saying. I do think we should do something, but I love the way you you coined it and not. Not a formal one that we can say here is the evaluation and we need to take a look, we need to do a little work on that, no question. Because we don't know what she even doing. No, I'm kidding. But because we have to assess. You know, we should assess, you know, where we are, because then we really won't know. And and I think she's earned that as well, because certainly I I expect it to be positive. I think we all do. But, you know, we'd be remiss if we don't take a look at some of the things that 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 we know we should, we should be examining every year. But the formal word is is I like what you said, that the formal evaluation. And hence the time that it takes to put one together right. We really focus that on the 21, 2021. Evaluation, again, with agreement with with Superintendent McNeil.
That's an interesting concept. I didn't really think about it that way. I think it's something that we should definitely talk about because not only are we only talking about a couple of months. Many of the metrics that we would use won't even be available due to COVID-19. I think it's something that we should definitely talk about. And then. If it's something that we're interested in as a board, we just have to make sure we. You know, get a good agreement from Dr. McNeil, making sure we're on the same page. That's a, it's interesting concept. It would definitely change our work this summer. As far as how we put this together. So definitely interested in talking about that more.
You're muted. There you go. Sorry. I'm going to just try to be a little less formal about all this and just use first names now. Nathan.
All right. Well, you know, to piggyback on what Dr. Taylor and trustee Cottle said. I think that an informal evaluation might actually be. You know, the better move for the situation we're in. Because not only is trustee Cottle said, will many of the metrics that we use not be available because of COVID. But many of the metrics that we'll be considering this time around, such as the metrics related to COVID. Won't necessarily be important in years to come. So if we hammer down a process now. Well, this is kind of crisis mode. So. Evaluating every year like we would this year doesn't seem like it would be necessarily a good thing. So I don't, I'm not entirely sure this is the right time to. Hammer out a process that we can continually use. And I definitely think trustee Taylor, Vice President Taylor is right about. That particular issue. That's all I had to say about that.
Thank you, Nathan. Katie.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to caution. Because two of the trustees will be leaving the board. And I think it, you know, it is important for us who have. Been a part of producing the results, you know, again, it's not just her evaluation, it's. It's also our collective evaluation of how the district is doing. So I, I don't want to let us all off. The hook too much because yes, there will be things that can't be measured because of COVID. But I would, I would suspect that. The majority of the things that we want to. Measure progress on can be measured and we can learn from the process of looking at. How were, how was our result impacted by COVID and how can we get a better or different result? Given that we may have to be doing the same kind of delivery of education going forward. So I just. I would just caution that I think it's still really important for this board as it is constituted. Who knows what the next board will be. To be able to provide that evaluation to. The superintendent. And again, I recognize it's not the evaluation process that we will have forever. That you will have forever. But I think, I think it is important. I certainly feel it's my responsibility as an outgoing trustee. To have performed my responsibility in in that evaluation and given that feedback and, you know, looked at the data and. What what could I have done differently as a trustee to, you know, to make the data look different? So. Just a, just a thought, but I I agree, it's not the evaluation process that we're going to be. That that the board should be locked into for the future.
Katie, can I ask what? You know, what is your sense about the timeframe for that? Is it just April 1 through July? At June 30, or do you see a different calendar for that?
Think there's, it's so hard to set a defined line that some, you know. We're going to count April 1 and not count March 31. You know, it was a, it was a school year that had months of. Of. Good work and great progress. And then it got interrupted and we need to look at the impacts of that and how that informs decision making going forward. I would look at it as a, as a, and again. I, I agree that having hired Kristen is an evaluation of sorts, but it's not everything that. That she would, that I would want if I were in her shoes. I want to have, you know, a more robust conversation about. You know, here's the things that happened. And yes, use the the pathway to positive progress. She and I had talked about that when she put it together that, you know, that was something that. Could be potentially part of an evaluation if the board wanted to do that. But I would look at. July 1 to June 30. And, and again, limit it, streamline it and make sure that it. That it allows for the impacts of this very, very. Strange time we're in now. And then. Start anew going forward. And again, through June 30, just because. Then we'll have, you know, the graduation and obviously. As has been mentioned by trustee Taylor and others, Vice President Taylor. We we have data metrics that come out that will be available. After June 30. So it's a, it's a December review of things that happened for the school year. That's, that's the way I would look at it. And. Granted, as an interim, she didn't get to do everything that she would have done as superintendent. I think that's part of what we look at in. Making allowances for the weirdness of this year. But. You know, as Emily has said, part of the purpose of the evaluation is to provide input. To to the recipient of the evaluation. And I I don't want to deny her that.
Thank you for that feedback. That's helpful to me. Superintendent McNeil or Kristen, I don't know what I'm doing.
Thank you very much, Malina, President. You know, I. I'm. I don't want to say I'm conflicted because I'm not. I mean, there was so much work that was done from July to June 30. And I just go back to to that little box that Emily had on one of those slides for it to be as objective as possible. Within this timeframe. We did so much work around the pathway and then. You know, the global pandemic kind of interrupted that pathway. And so much. Work has been done around that. I mean, I'm wondering at this point in time, is it the direction of the board? And I don't. And I know that we're going to be going to the next slide, which has some other issues as far as a facilitator and those types of things, because I don't, I don't want it to be. Odd for Emily. Or any staff member to help me develop. Evaluation component because they're direct reports to the superintendent. So I I hope the board understands that. I don't want any oddness around that. Would not like any oddness around that. But is it, is it the delight of the board for me to kind of put together some concepts and thoughts about some metrics that that you all would like to see in an evaluation between? July 2019 to June 30, 2020, and then bring it back. To the board to to take a look at. And then we we get that kind of hammered out. Maybe at a work session and then we can. Move forward with looking at what the next evaluation. In that same work session, let's get this done and then. Move forward with the evaluation, the next, the next evaluation period.
Kristen, I think that's a great idea if you're comfortable with it. And I do think it can. You know, I I don't think it needs to be something that. That looks exactly like a formal evaluation, you know, process. I think it can. Be. A little bit different this year, you know, I think December 2020's evaluation is not going to look like December 2021's evaluation. And I don't think it. Needs to and for for many different reasons. But I I would be personally interested in in seeing that. And we did talk. At our, with the board leadership team about. Scheduling a work session in June that would continue. Much of this conversation, but in greater depth and break out. At that point into more detail, what does the December 2020 evaluation? Then include in our and and kind of make some decisions around that and then get into more. Depth at that point, too, on the December 2021 evaluation and the calendar or the school year, you know, 2020, 2021. Evaluation. Looking at that evaluation using some variation of the current tool that we we have or the. Previous, I guess, tool, the the tool that was designed. Back in 20. 18, I think, 2018, does that sound right? Yeah, 2018. So. You know, I could see a work session in June where we really. Really. Tackle both of those. Trustee Cottle and then, trustee Cottle and then trustee Simon Holland, the casual thing isn't working.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess that was going to be where I was going to go with this, kind of where you ended with the 2018 work. Because I know myself, trustee Minneto, trustee Calvert, we were not here in 2018. I know there was work done on a handbook. I haven't seen that. I don't know if if it's, if we're going away from that. Or if we need to go back to that and figure out what we like and we don't like. If Dr. McNeil has thoughts on it. But I know three, at least three of us haven't seen that. And so I don't know where we go from here, if we're just totally throwing that out. Or I know that trustee Simon Holland, we've talked about this and I know there's a lot of work put in in 2018 to put that together. So I don't know if we just want to throw it out when three trustees haven't even seen it. And I know Dr. McNeil, I'm sure has thoughts on it. So I think we have to really get that settled on what are we doing with the 2018 work if we want to build from there, throw it out and start over. That that's really going to be critical on how we move forward.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. And just quickly from my perspective, that to me is separate from the December 2020 evaluation. It's an important conversation to have, but to me it was not at all tied to this. Interim period of times evaluation. So at trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, President Malina. I would just echo what you just said, that there are two different, two different issues, but I I do agree that. It would be worthwhile to have a workshop and a, you know, an overview orientation. To that handbook so that. The newer trustees, trustee Cottle and Calvert and Minneto can make their own mind about whether this is valuable or not. But what I was going to suggest. I I absolutely. Kudos, ditto, the suggestion, Dr. McNeil, that you and your team come up with. Just a simplified framework of things that would be, you know, proposed in the evaluation. And I would. I would point you back to that article that you quoted that said, you know, the financial management, the employee satisfaction, those that whatever those five or six or seven things. Have some measurable. Performance indicators in those simple things. Not, you know, five per or 10 per like we've had. But but that, I think that was a really good guide of those things that are really important to make sure are evaluated. And that would be my suggestion. Build from that for the 1920 evaluation and then for the 2021 evaluation. Come back and have a workshop session on the, not only the handbook that we have, but some of the Alsbury work previously. That would be my suggestion.
Superintendent McNeil, did you want to? Respond to that?
No, I I'm absolutely fine with that. And, you know, and I I'm looking at that, you know, I mean, I I go to the top one as far as, you know, the the management of financial affairs and what we're going through right now with budget. And, you know, that we have a structural balanced budget. I know that pre-COVID, I had sent out a survey to to employees as far as employee morale and and attainment of the pathway to positive progress. Goals at that point in time. I want to take a look and see if that data. You know, it was good. I just don't know if it's relative yet. So I want to do a little bit of work on on that. But maybe we use some of the the survey data that we're getting back. Now around distance learning. We can talk a little bit about that. But I'm totally fine to come back to the board. You know, maybe with like five different types of buckets. I'm not going to say they're going to match entirely with the strategic plan, but a combination of the strategic plan, the pathway. Come back to you all with a simplified evaluation tool that we can use for 1920. And then to. Andrews or trustee Cottle. To dive really into that, that, that document. Because there are a lot of aspects that that I like, but there are a lot of aspects that concern me within that document. And so to have a more deep dive into into. What actually is in there as well.
Yeah, and I think. I know Vice President Taylor has something to add, but I just would say that. You know, one of the outcomes I saw maybe out of this conversation today is that we do have. A motion that would. You know, bring back that. That evaluation tool, that handbook and and have the ability to really look through it in greater depth as a group. To make those decisions. But use it. You know, as the. Jumping off point for. For what will we use in 2021 and and not. Necessarily go into that conversation about an evaluation tool for 2021 with a completely blank slate. We're not. I don't think we're starting from scratch as much as we're looking at what we have and saying as a group, do we want to use any of this, all of it? And then decide where we go forward. And just. For, well, let me go to Vice President Taylor and then I know there's one more. Slide on this presentation that kind of covers some of this, too.
You know, actually, I can, I can wait because this. Moving in the same direction or something that's very similar. So I I think I can wait until the the next slide and then comment from there. I'll be okay with that.
Okay, trustee Cottle.
Yeah, I just want to make one quick plug. I know that our first order of business is to figure out our current evaluation. And then start strategic plan. I do think it's important with the, we have a good, I think there's a good makeup here of experience on our board. And I would like to get a majority, if not all of the work done for the 21 evaluation. In this calendar year. I don't want to leave any of that work left. If it gets changed, it gets changed, but I would like that to be done. So when it's handed off to the next board in January. It's done and we're in the school year. So we're pretty much obligated to follow it. Because the first half of the school year is part of that evaluation. So. I know that that's not our first order of business, but I think it's, I would like this board to make the majority, if not all of that decision. That's, that's my, my plug for, for looking towards the future. And Katie, don't be calling yourself a outgoing trustee yet, it's only me.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. And I, I think that ideally, because the, like I said, the clock is technically starts ticking July 1 for that, that evaluation cycle, you know, we should make that a push to try to, I don't personally feel like it has to be completely done on July 1, but I would definitely hope that we could try to have it done before the school year starts would be ideal to me because I don't want us to create a metric after the, you know, school year has started that, you know, has something included in it that the superintendent felt like she didn't have time to prepare for in advance. Or, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what that scenario might be, but, you know, I think that would be my preference. Okay, Emily, do you want to move on?
Absolutely. The next slide really just talks about the initial considerations for the 2021 and beyond evaluation process. So obviously how the strategic plan fits in. And I know that there's additional conversations to be had around the new strategic planning process. And so I think we're referring to 2021, the gap year, right? We're paying strategic plans. And so do we adopt a modified version of the current one or develop a new one? Or how does all of that fit into the evaluation as a consideration? I talked a little bit earlier in terms of the cycle of superintendent evaluation and how we're suggesting a, you know, goals, kind of a July goal setting, then periodic reporting, and then the summative evaluation. So what does goal setting look like in this model? How does it fit into the evaluation? Obviously trustees, superintendent, stakeholder input are important considerations. And so what does that look like? In what form does that take? And what weight does it have within the evaluation tool is an important component? Are there other qualitative data points? I know that it's important or the foundation of the evaluation to be as objective as possible. But there are certainly very high priority goals and metrics that you may want to include that we need to be measured in other kind of qualitative ways. And then the question of whether or not, once, once you've identified the, the process for actually facilitating that evaluation. So in the past, evaluations have involved not only reporting of particular metrics, but board interviews and employee surveys and another kind of qualitative data. So who is responsible for compiling all of that information? And then preparing the summative evaluation report is another consideration. So again, I think based on kind of the conversation that has already occurred and, and what it sounds like the next steps might be in terms of deep diving into some of this data. These are definitely considerations to have on, on the collective radar as we move forward.
And that Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Emily. And I would just say that I know some of this discussion will lead into the next agenda item, which is kind of our roadmap for the year and that the setting our priorities. And some of that, the reasoning for that agenda item came out of, you know, for me personally, as the president, not knowing and talking with the superintendent, you know, how many work sessions do we need to plan for this summer to get through a lot of this work? And where do our, our priorities fall, you know, kind of land on some of this work? And, you know, these are just big things, all of it, that we need to work on as a board and decide moving forward what, what our thoughts are. But I think for, you know, today's purposes and this agenda item in particular, we've, you know, I think had some good discussion about what, what the plan might be moving forward for the 1920 school year and that evaluation on that part. For me personally, looking at a work session that would do kind of a deeper dive into the 2021's school year's evaluation. If, if we're able to in any way kind of utilize the previous evaluation tool and the work that went into that, I don't personally see the need to have a facilitator as part of that work session. I think, you know, we, we can as a board work through it. If we, I guess if we got out of that conversation feeling like we just needed to completely start over, that would be a different discussion at that point. But I think for me personally, I'm not sure what a facilitator would bring to that conversation that would add to it. I think we can manage it as a board and with the supportive staff. That's my only comment on that previous slide. Dr. Taylor, Vice President Taylor, do you have still a comment that you wanted to make?
Um, no, I think for the most part, just really, I think, just in response to what Andrew said, as I'm trying to stay casual, 2021 has to be done as close to July 1 as possible. Just out of fairness to the superintendent. So that shouldn't be a consideration in terms of taking advantage of the expertise we have. We do have good expertise. But, I mean, man, I mean, we have, if we can't get this thing done by December, by the end of September, by the end of December, we, we got other issues. We must do that just in fairness to, just in fairness to Kristen. And I do think we should, it sounds like we're ready to move forward. I agree with, with asking Kristen and her team if they would make some recommendations to us in terms of an abridged look, but we do need to take a look at, at, at an assessment of 2019, 2020, and then focus our work from a superintendent's evaluation standpoint on, on 2021 as soon as possible. And I guess I'm ready to make that motion if we need one. So moved what I just said. JJ?
I was going to check with Chief General Counsel Lombardo. I see he's still with us. Can you hear me?
Or is he?
Sorry. Well, I did miss the question, however. I'm sorry, I was in the middle of reading something and I spaced out. I apologize. What is it?
No, I was, I didn't ask the question because I wanted to be sure you were there. So my question is, if we, for this item, if we want to move forward with kind of a plan for, for the evaluation that would take place in December 2020, and then a plan for the evaluation for 2021? And then the, moving forward, the desire to have a work session to really formulate what those evaluations are? Do we need to have two different motions? Do we need to select the date of this work session as a group right now? Or would that help staff if we did select something? We kind of threw out some dates earlier and weren't sure where we landed on any of those. I guess I'm just looking for mainly guidance on, do we need two different motions? Does that matter?
No, I don't think you need two different motions. If you, if you prefer it that way, you can of course ask for it. But I don't think you need two different motions. I also don't think you need a motion on calendaring. We have a board policy that says that's up to the you as the president in consult with the superintendent. But again, if you want to discuss it and pass a motion, you can. I, that's, that's not required.
Okay. We did, we were looking at June to have the work session. And I did ask just for the staff to explore the possibility of having an in-person work session with social distancing available. I don't know if that's possible or if there is a desire from the rest of the trustees to do that. To me, it's, I just struggle sometimes with the virtual format for bigger conversation like that. And I do think, you know, we probably won't go till 4:00 PM today, but I could see that, that work session being lengthy here. And don't know how people feel about being on Zoom for eight hours.
Well, I'll just say this, it won't be my first time. But, but I am absolutely open to, I mean, you know, meeting in person is great. Obviously, I can't do it now for my family reasons, but, but generally speaking, it's, you know, it's, whatever we can do and do so safely, that I'm fine with that, whatever the pleasure of the board. Being in person is cool, you know, plus, you know, at lunchtime now, I got to go get my own lunch, you know. And, you know, at least when I'm there, the district feeds us. Hey, you guys should have Grubhubbed everybody. I'm thinking we could have made that happen.
We will get on that next time.
I was just thinking how much money you're saving not having to feed Scott.
You're right, huh? That's probably why he's on, that's probably why he's not over there. I do think
We can't go into people's character incompetence and misconduct, everyone.
No, okay, well, that's definitely misconduct. I do think, though, the fact that we were not Grubhubbed today, I would like that reflected in the evaluation for
Wait, hold on just a second. We haven't established the metrics yet. Hold on a second.
Is that, oh, okay, that's not on the agenda? Okay.
Trustee Minetto?
I, I would like to have one in person. I like seeing people's faces. I mean, in real life.
Okay.
I'm so distancing.
Yeah. We can just ask, I think if I mentioned that we were kind of exploring what our options were there. So if we can continue to look at that and then we'll look at some dates in June. And then whenever you're ready, Vice President Taylor, to make the motion.
Yes, yes, I'm ready to make the motion. I move that the Board of Trustees prioritize, ask staff to come back with some suggestions for an abridged version of the areas we can examine on, for the 2020 evaluation. That should be as soon as possible. And that we turn our attention to the 2021 superintendent evaluation so that it can also be done as close to July 1 as absolutely possible.
Second. Okay. Motion by Vice President Taylor, second by trustee Minetto. I think, just want to check, JJ, did you get that? Are you recording this?
I got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Great. Well, that was good conversation. Again, it's been a very productive work session. I think the next item will, as I mentioned, kind of continue some of this conversation. 2.7 is a discussion of timeline and milestones to be completed as part of the development of a new strategic plan or continuation of current strategic plan to include discussion of key board targets, milestones, and board presentations for 2020, 2021 school year for discussion and possible action. And this is, I know, a team effort, but I'll hand it off to Superintendent McNeil to start. And I sort of mentioned this previously, but, you know, my hope out of this conversation is really that as a board, we can have some good conversation about, you know, not individually, what is the one, you know, priority for us, but just as a whole for the district, kind of right now. What, what can we really focus our efforts on? What's the priorities to focus our efforts on as a group and as a district? That, you know, will carry us through the, not just what the next few months or, or year looks like with coronavirus, but knowing that we need to kind of keep moving things forward. And I would just say, as we move into this discussion, I really appreciated what trustee Simon Holland said at the last meeting related to the, the webinar that she was part of about, you know, I forgot the wording, what can you leave, take out of, or take off the plate, I guess, at this time? So I think that's something to think about, too, as we hear from Superintendent McNeil.
Thank you very much, President Raymond. Members of the board, for the record, Superintendent Kristen McNeil. Just thought that I would start that off very, very formally.
Very formal.
Well, I, I do want us to be able to kind of look at the year in review. I mean, this goes a little bit into what we were just talking about previously as far as mapping out data points and board calendaring for those large agendas that we have coming up on June 23. We have now the tentative work session in June for the evaluation, starting the conversation around strategic plan. We'd also like to present with, with Office of Accountability and, and starting on July 1, the Deputy Superintendent Debbie Byersdorf, our profile of a graduate in that work. So you should have Ms. Vanjie Russell and her team put together a roadmap for the 2021 school year. And I believe you should have that document. But JJ, can you please bring that document up? Thank you very much. So this is color coded, the yellow regular board meetings, the work, the kind of peach color, the work sessions of the Board of Trustees. You then have separate events in there, such as the National School Boards Association, Council of Great City Schools, the NASB, or the Nevada Association of School Boards. And then where you see a yellow with the blue ring around it, that could be for work sessions. So JJ, can you forward this document? Go to the next page. So on the left-hand side, you'll actually see the calendar. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the actual board meetings. Now, what you don't see on this particular document is June 23. So I'm just going to make the assumption that that board meeting, June 9th and June 23rd, those are, those are pretty much set. We'll come back with, with a date for the June work session. So starting from July 7, you'll see the meetings. So you added July 7 as a board meeting, then July 28. So it's to the pleasure of the, of the chair. We can go either month by month, we can go topic. However, the board would like to run through this. And Vanjie, is there anything that you would like to orient the board before the discussion?
Sorry, I was on mute. This really was prepared by JJ Dachelder, our Board Services Coordinator, working in conjunction with the team and utilizing her history with the board process. So I would ask that she speak to the development of this calendar, if she would.
Sure. So what we really tried to do in creating this is give the board a quarterly view of what happens and what comes up on a regular basis during board meetings. And we have items in red, like in August, we have items in red. And those, action, action must be taken on those on that date. So, you know, we have, we would put as part of an agenda before that, you know, we'll take like a highlight discussion on possible action on a district BDR. Start those conversations, but the board has to take action on that by a specific date. And so we have that listed. Then on the far right-hand Then on the far right-hand side, we have other important dates that will be, that the board should know about, like a new teacher breakfast in July, LTL, first day of school, first day of kindergarten. We starred dates that will come up, but we don't have the exact date yet, like summer graduation. So this will be constantly changing as we add to it, but that's kind of what that should give you an idea of.
That's great work, JJ. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think Superintendent McNeil, that if we could really kind of not go month by month, but go major topic kind of down the list, and, and then if you could reference maybe where you see that fitting in time-wise, those conversations or, you know, where in the calendaring they're placed. And then if trustees have a specific item on the calendar that they would like to make sure that we discuss. I don't, just kind of glancing at it, I don't think we need to go through more of the kind of not, not that they're minor in content, but might, maybe minor in, in overall impact presentations and, and things like that, we can just really mention, we, you know, the June meetings have a few big ones in that, that will maybe have impacts later on, including the bell schedules and then the other one that I thought we series, if that is a longer-term project and not just a quick kind of discussion at a policy meeting. And that is the other one, I just wanted to check on, there are no policy meetings on this, are we? I can't remember, I know we've talked about what that looks like moving forward with the General Counsel, but I can't remember if we're holding off on them.
So at the next board meeting, we're going to bring forward the suspension of the Board Policy Committee meeting to take care of those policies that we just talked about today. I would imagine that at some point in time, we'll then come back and unsuspend the board policy meetings. So we can go ahead, if you like, and program those in. Because I believe they were on Tuesdays offset from the, from the regular board meeting. So for example, if you take a look at, let's just move to August. We've got board meetings slated for August 11th and August 25th. I believe then that the board policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, JJ, then that would fall on the, on the 18th. Were they the first Tuesday?
Yes, board policy is typically the first Tuesday of each month. And but just to kind of give you a heads up, based on this calendar, we're also going to create a similar roadmap for committee. So we would include board policy with that as well as on this one, too.
Okay. I, I think it'd be great if we could start just to have them on there, that board policy meeting's up again in August. So the first one being August 4. And if we decide to extend the suspension through, you know, another month or two, that's fine, or however long, but if they're on there, then at least it's kind of a placeholder.
Neil, did you want to say something? You popped up.
I just wanted you all to know I was still here.
Oh.
No, I'm just kidding. You guys covered it. I was going to jump in, but you've got it.
So if you then move into, I'm just taking a look at our June meeting, so for example, the, the bell presentation, depending on, on what would happen at the let's see, that one is coming up on June 9. Presentation on school start time. So depending on what the board decides on June 9, then we would have updates as far as, you know, community input and those types of things coming back to the board. So I don't know if we want to layer that in at this point in time until we wait to find out what on the 9.
Yeah, good point. We can wait on that one. I think, I'm just kind of keeping it in the back of my mind, but that's going to be a big community outreach, this, you know, component when we look at this bigger picture, especially thinking about the strategic plan.
And so I was just going to mention that one as far as the next large bucket here, as far as the strategic plan. And putting some dates on the calendar at this point in time. As you all know, our strategic plan is ending in 2020, so we need to start the conversation and having those board work sessions. And we had already talked about having a work session in June, so now we're going to have one regarding the superintendent's evaluation, but then the, the starting of the strategic plan reporting. Would you all like to have a, a work session then in July? So we'll have one in June. We'll get that date, but then do we need to put some calendar dates in July for board work sessions relegated strictly to the strategic plan?
So I would just love to hear some feedback from the trustees around this item. We were, I mean, the original idea was to start tackling strategic, this strategic plan last summer. And so we are sort of a year behind schedule on the planning. I think it was helpful for me to hear from Superintendent McNeil about the process in creating the, the one that's ending now. And, and that might be helpful for some of the other trustees to hear as well, just how involved the staff and community were in that process and how long it took to, to get there. So if you wouldn't mind just giving a brief kind of recap of that process for us.
Sure, absolutely. So this happened all the way back in 2010, around, around there, as far as kind of the template of the strategic plan that we have now. And, and I also have, you know, not to forget that we have Ben and Debbie here as well. So there were 11 subcommittees, and those subcommittees were based around particular initiatives or, at that point in time, objectives. So we had, for example, a committee around performance, performance management. We had a committee around academic pathway. And then those committees met for several weeks and developed initiatives and objectives branched off from the goals. So the board decided at a high level what the goals would be. So right now, academic performance, human capital, community engagement, efficiency and transparencies, and, and safety and security. Those are the goals that, that the board set. And those were revamped from the 2015 strategic plan. So you're going to have a large amount of community engagement having it facilitated at some level, and what that would look like. Because the, the subcommittees met on different days. We sent out public notices, we sent out you know, media releases. They were all over the district. And then you bring all that information back into a work So go ahead.
In total, how long was that process?
Oh, Vanjie, can you help me out there? I mean, it was a long, long process. And Ben, I mean, it, it took almost a year to get that.
Year.
That up.
Yeah, my, my recollection is it was months worth of, and it was truly engaging stakeholders at different school sites and communities and surveys and that kind of stuff. And then fleshing it out with the board and writing it up. I think Kristin's right, it was at least a year, or close to a year.
Thank you. I think what I struggled with and why I really wanted to have this discussion as a group was that I just, in this moment, can't make my brain wrap around how we do a really big, community-engaged planning process for a new strategic plan in this time of, of COVID. Knowing that we can't just stop everything and, and, you know, and not move forward on, on big items. But I just was really struggling with what that would look like, but also struggling with what do we do if we don't do that and, and how do we, and so I, I hope that, that, you know, kind of gives you some insight in where I wanted this conversation to go today, just I need help as one trustee in understanding what this could look like. Trustee Cottle and then Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you. For me, I guess in my schedule, it just seems like we're going to have, we're going to have a lot of discussions. So it almost seems appropriate to schedule a calendar hold for one work session a month for however long we think this will need to go, and if we don't need it, then we don't need it. But at least it gets scheduled. Because what I get concerned about, especially for these really in-depth work sessions, is we kind of go month to month, and then it's really hard to find a date that works for everybody, and we don't want to have anyone left out. So I would recommend we calendar one work session day a month for strategic planning. And if it's not needed, then just cancel it. Because it seems like we're going to need a lot of meetings, and we may even need more meetings, depending on how we put this together. Because I, I'm with you, Melina, it's, it's going to be hard to engage stakeholders in, in this climate we're in. Because even, I don't know how we would have large group gatherings. And if we make them small, we're going to have that much more. And how did staff make that work to have all of those meetings in a short period of time? So I, I would say, putting together like a master plan of how this, how the district wants to do this and what they need from us, and then we calendar out days into the future that are reserved in our calendars for work sessions, so that we can make sure that we're meeting to get this done outside of the board meeting. It's just going to be too much, try to fit within our board meeting structure, it needs to be separate days.
Thank you. Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of comments. I agree with you that it's going to be impossible to do a robust stakeholder-involved strategic plan at this time. It just, I don't think we can do it, and I, I appreciate your struggle with, so if we don't do that, what, what do we do? Just as a thought, some simple activities we could do. One, have staff share with us what, what they would change about the existing strategic plan. You know, what, in your perfect world, how would it be different? And then second, maybe do an online survey. Not statistically, you know, representative, but at least anecdotally, an online survey of the community and families and students comments about changes they would make to the strategic plan that we have. You know, what they think that priorities should be. And then third, I know staff is working on the profile of a graduate, and I think that's really valuable work. And we should, we should make time to have that discussion occur. And I think if we did those things, we could get an interim strategic plan that isn't the, you know, year-long, community-based process, but it would update what we have and make it, you know, make it more reflective of our current situation. And regarding Trustee Cottle's suggestion about a, a work session a month, maybe we just convert what were the policy meetings on the first Tuesday to a work session when and if we need it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I think, you know, it may be something such as, to what Trustee Simon Holland, more of a bridge document from, from the envisioned 2020. You would then have a bridge document for, for 2021 built on, because the idea of the profile of a graduate, and Ben can, can chime in here. The idea of the profile of a graduate is really to, to start your strategic plan. So you, you have the pathway, these are the competencies that we want our students to be able to exit Washoe County School District with. You base your strategic plan off of what those competencies are, and you base your goals off of that. Then you base your budget around those strategic plan goals and where you're going to be allocating your, your resources in order to achieve those, those goals and the competencies within the profile of graduates. So that's, that's kind of what, in a 30-second commercial, that's what we were going to bring to you back in the June work session to kind of lay that plan out. But it may be what we're looking at now is more of a bridge document for 2021 to carry us into building a more comprehensive strategic plan out from 21, 22, and further.
I, I like that idea, and I, I agree with you, the profile would be sort of your north star of, you know, what we all want to achieve. And there will be other things that, you know, family engagement and school safety and those things that are not necessarily what the graduate looks like, but are also important priorities. And I, I do think we can get some input from the public about what they think the priorities should be and how do they feel about our current plan. So I, I think those things are doable at a, at a June work session, and I appreciate that.
Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just going to agree, I'm going to, I wasn't going to use the term interim document, but I, and I like the way that, that Kristin really went into the detail behind that. That was going to be my recommendation, let's get something that, I was going to say update, but I like interim document better because it kind of opens it up for, there may just be some other things. You know, an update just kind of goes along with what you have. Interim gives us, I feel like it gives us a little more flexibility. If there's some adjustment that, that staff needs to make or that we get from the feedback from the community, something else I think is really important. And, or, or if there's something that a board member or, or wants to think that we should really dive deeper into and we get and can rally some votes behind that. Only thing I would recommend from the, because I know we're going to be limited from the community input standpoint, based upon this environment that we live in, is that we really, really make sure we get those, those poor communities, those ones that would, that are, that are harder, whether it's because of BAC says, or whether it's because of the information, or whether it's because it's just harder to get them, right? Some of it is just harder to get them, you know, just like the census, it's just harder. But I think it's, it's really important. I don't know what that looks like, you know, I know Irene's, you know, good at putting some plans together around that, and I don't know what it looks like in, you know, in 2020, based upon where we are. But I do think we owe it to those communities to make sure that we are unreasonably reasonable, so to speak. When just trying to make sure, even though this is for the next year or two, we still really want their voice to be a part of this.
Madam Chair, could I have Ben maybe chime in a little bit? Because he's done significant work, his, his, his team has done work on those surveys to, to Dr. Taylor's point. So paper surveys and delivery of that. So Ben, do you mind just chiming in a little bit about that?
For, for the distance learning surveys, and we're going to propose, hopefully this weekend. this weekend with kind of reopening surveys, there, and let me know if I'm not answering a question, but in order to reach kind of people that can't get online, we have a database of, through Infinite Campus, of families that don't have an email registered with us. So we mail them physically with self-addressed stamped envelopes to send us back. And then we've been going to the kind of the mobile harvests and the food distribution sites to hand out with kind of the packet of information there. And then finally, our re-engagement team, Rochelle Maria's team, when they do kind of what we call porch visits in this time, they leave that with a packet of supports and stuff. So does that answer your questions?
You know, it does. Thank you. Those are, those are, those are great efforts. And I think we utilize those and whatever others there may be, if we can get our media partners to help as well to put that out there for those communities. You know, just again, just to make sure we're doing all that we can. I love the ideas that you mentioned. You know, there are some, some untraditional ways, because, you know, this is, these are untraditional communities that we don't typically get unless we do some special things. So I think all of those things are going to be helpful.
Sorry, just one more thing. Yeah, if we were able to realize media partners, then we could set a quick hotline that says if you want a paper survey, call this number and we'll mail you one, kind of like Kristin, Dr. McNeil's been doing with the paper packets and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think, again, I just think that traditional efforts are, you know, are going to be necessary for this. But, but you know, it's nothing new. We all know that. So just not committing that we're doing that. Again, ask them for the media help. And maybe it's, you know, like utilizing the phone. And I don't know what, I don't know what a survey like this looks like or how comprehensive it is, or if it's even doable to say, hey, call people to do this survey over the phone. It may be way too comprehensive for this. That I don't know. Like you're talking at a level of detail that I don't even really need to know, frankly. But anything that we can do, bottom line, that's all I'm saying. Anything that we can do, I think would be great.
I'm not sure. There was a question directed at me, but why not?
Nope. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a question, but.
Yeah, I think, because I've been toying with ideas of how do we engage people over the summer if we have new ideas for reopening and that kind of stuff. We can do kind of sampling and do virtual town halls. We have, you know, a lot of people on the team that are willing to help and scribe from town halls and that kind of thing. So if we want to do this kind of thing, get as much information we can as kind of a bridge here, then we can approach kind of data and stakeholder engagement. I agree overall with the, all of the trustees' points that even with the, the profile of a graduate as a North Star, our kind of strategic considerations are a little bit up in the air for the time being. But if we are to do a bridge year, we can, we can certainly do traditional and as much non-traditional and virtual engagement for the community stakeholders as we can.
Great. Great. Thanks.
I think from my perspective.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam President. Let me just close this all. I think we could also, to the extent possible, utilize some of our board members that have, particularly have relationships, strong relationships in particular communities. We can, you know, I'm thinking of obviously myself and communities of color, thinking of Andrew and the great relationship we have with, with the North Valleys area, Cold Springs and so on. It's easier to miss because, you know, they're a little more rural out there. They tend to be. So it's easier to miss those voices as well. So if there are ways you can utilize us and others, you know, to get input on that and some of the, maybe some virtual ways or whatever, then let's take a look, let's take, take advantage of those as well. Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Ben.
I think one thing I'd be interested in seeing maybe come back at the work session where we would look more at this, whatever we want to call it, interim strategic plan ideas. I know where these things are kind of all taking place at the same time and not knowing really what level of distance learning might be taking place next year, if any. But I think I'd be interested if, if we are in some form of distance learning next school year, how do we, what kind of outcomes, student outcomes can we measure in that time? Because, you know, I think it is going to look different than perhaps what it looks like when we have different measurements in the classroom, I guess. So I don't know if that's true or if, you know, the student outcome stuff would be the same regardless of where the student is. I, you know, it obviously hasn't been something that we could look at in the same way that for the past three months. But if it's a longer-term situation that we're in, and really maybe more what it is, is just a COVID component of the strategic plan and how we, or maybe COVID is interwoven into all of the different areas of the strategic plan, but including technology and devices and meals and feeding students. And, you know, I, I don't see that as just sort of ending the, the measurements around that as ending at the end of this summer or, or, you know, maybe even at the end of December. So I'd be curious to see what, you know, staff's thoughts were, I guess, around how do we, what, what part of, of the interim strategic plan could address distance learning and some of the other COVID issues. And maybe I'm way off base. I don't know.
No, I actually think you, and I think that's where some of those reporting at the regular board meetings, the, if we can get that calendar set up, the regular reporting metrics, you know, EL exit rates, those, those types of things. So I'm wondering if that fits more within the reporting structure that we said that we were going to bring back to you as far as what you all would like to be seeing. So whether it's a benchmark assessment in math, whether it's a, you know, the, the work that they're doing and the teaching and learning teams around, or actually before with the, with the science assessments. And then I don't want us to lose sight of, and I just hate to be Debbie Downer here, but what the budget impact is going to be and, and what that's going to do to the resources that we have available to us to continue to put these items together. And if we're going to be in, in an era of very scarce resources. So don't want to lose sight of that as well, too. So hopefully that answered your question. I'm wondering if we could layer that within the board presentation. Hey, should me to bring you all back from what, what I'm following is a calendar. Get some input from you all as far as what some of the academic targets or academic areas that you would like to see reported out at board meetings.
Yeah, I think that works. I guess I'm really just sort of thinking, I know we, we looked at this past quarter as a review for the students. And that won't necessarily be the case, I'm assuming, you know, moving forward. I know you and the team are working hard on what that will look like in the fall and beyond. But if we need to consider different metrics for how to, to measure student outcomes in an environment of distance learning or hybrid type of situation. But if it, as long as it's just something that we're receiving kind of updates on and being, you know, presented on. And I know some of it, you can't really measure until they've had the, the assessment maybe that shows, you know, what did the COVID slide or the, whatever they're calling it, how did that impact our students? But just something to think about. I, I do like the idea of, of building in the first Tuesday of the month as either, you know, just holding that date for either work session or, or the board policy. You know, I think most of us kind of already have that in mind. And I, I know we had talked about having a deeper dive discussion around the strategic plan at the June work session. If trustees still feel like that, that is appropriate and where we want to move forward, do we feel like that is too much to tackle all in one meeting in June, you know, or do we, and do we want to, I guess, add a July work session as well to, you know, continue that conversation? Technically, would our, would this strategic plan that we're currently operating under extend through December 2020? Or is it school year 20? Do we need to worry about finishing the, you know, interim plan before August?
Yeah, I mean, Ben, Ben and Debbie can jump in, but typically your strategic plan went in on the, on the academic year, on the, on the school calendar year.
Yeah, I, I agree. I do really like the idea of a monthly kind of update and not necessarily making strategic goals in July or August, and then scheduling out updates on those. Because I have a feeling this year, so to trustee Raymond's point, I think there are going to be different measures of student learning. So we can do, I can picture a presentation on, let's say, COVID slide and the information we have by August, end of August, September. But then also discuss some different measurements that we want to do to make sure that students are growing and learning and how we're addressing that gap. But I do think, you know, in the fall, at some of these update meetings, we are going to want to pay attention to attendance virtually and physically to the point we get there. We're going to want to pay attention to this kind of safety and climate measures. So I really like the idea of kind of building in an updated data metric and keep, yeah, an update, a monthly update on kind of relevant metrics that the trustees and kind of the superintendent agree that is going to drive our, our district toward where we can put in a solid, long-term strategic plan.
Thank you, Ben. That's great. Are people fading?
It may be something to, to think about as well, too, that we just go ahead and calendar. So on, on one board meeting, you'll have the, the academic reporting structure. But on the next meeting, I would imagine you all would want continual reports on how things are going operationally. So how is transportation, how is nutrition services within this, this COVID environment? How are we, you know, how are we doing around classroom size and social distancing, financial aspects to it, updates on PPE, updates on, on safety of students, and to Ben's point, attendance? So maybe it's one meeting that you have the academic reporting structure report, and then on the next meeting, a COVID-19 update or to integrate the operational aspects to it. Does that make sense?
Great. Thank you. Trustee Cottle and then trustee Manetto.
Thank you. For me, I would recommend that we schedule work session in June and July. Like I said, if we don't need it, we don't need it. But by scheduling that, then staff can plan accordingly and we can spread out the work. I do think we'll need two work sessions this summer to get all of this done in a really meaningful way. Trying to pack it in all the one days is probably unrealistic.
Trustee Manetto.
I would agree with that. And Kristin, so would you want a regular pattern of the first time we meet in the month, it's this, and the second time we meet in the month, it's this? That way we just always know. That would help me. And I'm just, a weird question. July 7th, that is the first Tuesday of the month. We usually go second, fourth. I'm used to these patterns because I plan trips around them. I was just curious as to why it's the 7th instead of the 14th.
There was a rational reason for that. And I'm going to ask Banji, what was the reason for that, the 14th? There was something that, that we couldn't do it on the 14th?
We did move it to the 7th. In the event that we needed to provide direction to schools, we would have enough time for them to work through whatever items were in the directives.
Yeah, my memory was that we were, knowing that we were going to be focusing on reopening plans, we need to get whatever we can determine around that as soon as possible to get the information out to our schools. So.
Thank you, Banji. I knew there was, there was a darn good reason why we did that. And just to answer your question, trustee Manetto, I think it's, it's better for you all to, to have a set schedule so that you all become, you know, familiar. I know this board meeting is, this is going to happen, and the next board meeting, this is going to happen. But I also think it's great for the public to get familiar with that kind of rotation. And I, I know that it's, I don't want to say easier on the staff, but I think the staff likes that better because then it's a known pattern of what they can expect.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thanks, President Raymond. I think trustee Cottle is right. We need to have two work sessions. And I also want to really encourage staff to, to make recommendations because we're not going to be able to get enough done this way. You know, I, I know you, you all want to be really respectful of the trustee's input, but gosh, there's seven of us and we can flap around for hours as we have demonstrated. I just really want to give you the, at least from this one trustee, a lot of leash, if you will, a lot of rein to make proposals, make recommendations, and then let us react to it. So, yeah, you guys go forth. You're closest to it. You know what needs to be done and, you know, put it out there for us, and then we can add to it or subtract from it. But the more that you can give us specific content about here's where we'd like to go, this is what we'd like to do, we'll get so much, you know, we'll, we'll be serving you better.
Great. Thank you. This is a discussion, possible action item. I don't know that we need to take official action at this point. I think we've given you lots of direction. I don't know if we would have to officially take action that, you know, this will continue at the next, at that June work session or.
Well, let me, let me jump in. Direction because of board policy, direction doesn't really mean anything. You have to have an action, right? Because one member, so maybe, and I know this is a tough one to have a motion on. So maybe we break it up, or if we can do one motion, or a motion could be as simple as we're going to ask staff to follow the recommendations we've made here. But we do need some type of motion on the record, just because we've taken some type of action without really voting. So I'd like to get a vote, just to make it clean.
Great. Trustee Simon Holland, are you volunteering?
I'm volunteering. I'll take a shot. I'll take a shot at it. And before I do that, I also neglected to tell you how much I appreciated this. This is great. This is really, really wonderful. And just thank you, thank you for flagging those things. It's so helpful to have all that context. So thanks for that. So I would move that we give staff direction to schedule work sessions as necessary to develop a bridge strategic plan for the 2021 school year, and that you bring back to the board recommendations for process. school year, and that you bring back to the board recommendations for process and priorities, any updates to the existing plan, things that you want to change, and anything that, that you feel the board will need to look at, timelines, et cetera. But to bring back recommendations for those things at one or more upcoming work sessions in June and July. That work.
I may have, may ask a question. Do we need a second first, and then a question? Just for clarification?
Should do the second first, technically.
Okay, a second. Okay, go ahead. Ms. Manetto, question would be, so you said, Katie, for the 21 school year, that's the school year we're in now, correct? I mean, not now, but we will be in, in about 15 minutes.
Correct, yeah, for the coming school year.
So then that means... Gotcha. Okay, so that means during this school year is when the staff is doing the work and yada, 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 you know, like as we discussed. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got the timing right. Okay?
Yeah, so that, so that we're almost to June now. So in June and July, we will have work sessions that the staff will prepare some recommendations about more of the strategic plan that will...
Getting the input and all that stuff. Yep. I got it. I just wanted to make sure I just got the, got the, you're right. So, okay, good. I, oh, wait, you didn't ask?
So we have a motion by trustee Simon Holland, and a second by trustee Manetto. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Great. Well, that brings us to our closing items. JJ, do we have any final public comment today, 3.1?
We do not.
Thank you. Well, then I will be very happily adjourning this meeting from my un-air-conditioned room. I'm just sweating. And I hope you all have a wonderful afternoon and a great weekend.